Good evening. We're calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, Tuesday, November 7th. Pastor Wes Harding from the Bridge Church will give our invocation and Councilmember Dugan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing prayer in these chambers. Let us bow our heads. Father, we come before you today just so thankful. Thank you for the city. Thank you for the community that you have allowed us to live in. Thank you for the leadership that is here. Thank you for the police and the fire and the city workers and just the way the servants are here. And Lord, I pray that this evening, as we discuss the business of the city, that we would be civil, that we would be able to express our ideas and our views of the future in a civil manner, that we would be able to relate to each other well and be able to look to the long-term goals of this city, one of brotherhood, one of community, and one of just betterment. Thank you for allowing us to live here. And Heavenly Father, we just thank you for our good health and also the health of the city. This is run by good leadership, by good people, and we are very thankful for being here. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me, President, Justice to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening is a special night because we have some special people to introduce in our city that are going to be part of our city history now. So if Chief Whalen would come up, please?
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. It is my honor to introduce you and the El Segundo community to our newest police officers. And notice that I said police officers. Actually, we're city employees about six or seven months ago. But after undergoing a very rigorous six months at the LA Sheriff's Academy, they are now certified by the state as police officers. It's quite a huge accomplishment. And we're excited to roll them into our training program. And after about another five or six months, we're going to call them El Segundo Police Officers as they finish that and they go on to many great things. Standing immediately next to me is Rudy Reynoso. He comes from Central California, Modesto area, where he was living up there until recently. Him and his family are moving down there. He married his childhood sweetheart, has a seven-year-old daughter. And what I like especially about Officer Reynoso is his prowess on the track and field venue. Because as you know, we like to participate in the Baker to Vegas relays. And he has assured me that he will take on the most difficult route and run better than anybody has before. Next to him, Officer Matt Rice, may look familiar to you. He is the first product of what I call our Farm League program. He joined a program started under Prior Chief Tavera, our internship program in the high school, El Segundo High School. So he was an intern at El Segundo High School, El Segundo High graduate, went on to UCLA, where he became a cadet working for our agency. And following that, we hired him, and now he's a police officer. So that's very special. And we want to continue that effort to bring people within our community back to our community to serve everyone. So there they are.
Well, welcome. We're so happy you chose us. And Chief Whalen, we're so happy you chose them. And we'd love to take photos with you. And do you have any family or friends in the audience tonight? I heard a note in a... No? Okay, because they would be invited to join you for the photos. So let's do a group photo with all of council, and then we'll do individual photos with each of you. Thank you.
the city means a lot to me, and this profession means a lot to me as well. And just being labeled a police officer is a dream come true. It really is. But then just saying that I'm an El Segundo police officer is just the cherry on top. And like was said, I went to El Segundo Middle School, graduated El Segundo High School, and I was a police cadet here for four years. So the city really does mean a lot to me. And this department has really made me into the man that I am today. So I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. The academy for me was a life-changing experience. One of the things I learned in there was Sir Robert Peel. He is the considered the father of modern-day policing. And one of the principles that he preached was the police are the community, and the community is the police. So I'd like to move forward with my life and, you know, grow to become a part of the city of El Segundo, grow with the community, work with them. And I'm from Modesto, but I'd like to... Sorry. Just so far, everybody has been very accepting in the department, and I hope that continues with the community. So I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Hey, this evening, we have a proclamation. Whereas, in an effort to provide for children who otherwise might not experience the joy of the holiday season, the City of El Segundo Fire Department, along with other Southland Fire Agencies, has participated in the Spark of Love program for the past 25 years, and has been a collection site for toys and food items donated during the holidays. And whereas, the ever-upward spiraling cost of living burdens disadvantaged and displaced families who may not be able to give gifts during the holiday season without help from the Spark of Love program. And whereas, the true holiday spirit is reflected in unselfish giving, and our thoughts and hearts go out to those less fortunate than ourselves. And whereas, in the past, with the help of civic-minded citizens who live and work in our community, hundreds of toys plus food items have been collected and distributed to children and families in El Segundo and other South Bay cities. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2017 through December 20th, 2017, as the Spark of Love Toy Drive. The community is encouraged to support this holiday program by contributing toys and non-perishable foods to the El Segundo Fire Department, Fire Station Number One at 314 Main Street, during the period of November 20th through December 20th, 2017. And here tonight to accept this proclamation is Chief Chris Donovan. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, thank you very much. Tough act to follow with the two police officers, but keeping that in mind, the Spark of Love campaign is certainly important to the Fire Department. We're happy to participate again this year. As you know, you can bring unwrapped gifts or food to the fire station. We also have relationships with our local businesses. So if you're interested in participating, you can go to the city website. On the search engine, type in Spark of Love, and it will take you to some links. You can fill out some forms and submit them to the Fire Department. We'll gladly participate. So far, we've had participation from Carl Storts on Grand Avenue and Continental Development, and I'm sure that will increase. Some of the local charities that are the recipients of this generosity in our community, The Case, El Segundo Food Pantry, Wounded Warriors, LAX Kiwanis, Hope Chapel, and many other area requests as needed basis. So again, it's amazing to think that we're at this holiday season already. It seems so short how quickly time has come. But if you have an opportunity to help those in need, this is a great cause. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, and your Fire Department. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Prustak?
Here.
President?
Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Protonboils?
Here.
And Mayor Fuentes?
Here. So now is the time for public communications related to city business only. Five minutes per person, 30 minutes total. We do have three public hearings this evening. So if you are here for a public hearing, you might want to wait until we call that public hearing. Mr. Bugarides?
Hi. Madam Mayor, City Council people. I apologize for my scruffy appearance. I literally just ran over from Stevenson Field. We're in the middle of Babe Ruth practice. Going to make it quick and get back. I would like to speak to an item on the council members' items this evening. Seems like it might be kind of a trivial thing. I believe, Dr. Brand, it was your item suggesting that you make membership on one of the commissions, the Arts Commission, to be specific, to be interviewed and chosen by the members of the committee. I think this is a terrifically bad idea. And I'll just run through it really briefly. Having appointed commissions and having served on commissions, I'm pretty intimately appreciative and knowledgeable about the process. They're not trivial pursuits. They represent the city. They represent you. And I'm trying to think of what a good reason would be to not conduct those interviews as council people. Because as I say, they're not trivial pursuits. Every one of these commissions, and people need to know this, the commissioners are not paid, and they serve as volunteers. And it's very important, and it's a great service to the community, but they're not zero-cost items. Staff has to be there. There's materials. Facilities are used. They cost the city money to run. And that may be a great use. But there needs to be accountability. And if the commission is choosing its own members, picking and choosing who they like, I don't know who they're accountable to anymore. And what I think could be a really bad outcome to this is you get these little fiefdoms out in the community. And just let's just play this out, where you have a commission, and let's not say it's the Art Commission, because I don't know any of those people. And I'm sure they're the great people with nothing but the best interests. But let's go down the road and say we have a streets commission. And let's say someone says, how do you get on that streets commission? Well, they interview. And let's say John Doe is the chief of that commission, and he decides who gets interviews and who gets chosen. Now you've got a little patronage system, and you get these little fiefdoms. They're not accountable to the city, and they're not accountable to you. But they're representing you. And I don't think this is what you're going to want. And I can't see any benefit. Now, if you don't want to take the time, and I get that, what I don't think we need is a lot more commissions. I think we have too many now, to be honest with you. But if you don't have the time to interview these people, then maybe the commission shouldn't exist. But if the commission exists, you guys should be interviewing them 100%. Because I'll tell you what the community, and I don't know everything this community wants. I can't pretend to. But I can tell you one thing it's not asking for, and that's less accountability. That's what you're going to be doing. You're going to be making these little fiefdoms, these little clubs. We've seen it in high school. We've seen it in business. You don't need to create these autonomous things under the auspices of the city. It's a bad precedent. I can't see a good reason to do it unless you guys just don't want to take the time to interview them. Other than that, I can't see an upside. I sat for a long time, and maybe it's not a big deal, and I'm making a big deal out of it. But I can't see this overwhelming need to change a system that's been in place for 50 years. So I would urge you to leave it the way it is. Interview the people. If we don't like them, now we can come talk to you. Sure, we will. But we don't need unaccountable city commissions out there that are picking and choosing their own members. And that's it. So I'm going to run back to the field. As always, I thank you for your service. Have a good evening.
Hey, seeing no more public communications, we'll close. And council comments? This is an item that's later in the evening, but if there's any council comments?
Yeah, I'll comment just briefly because we are going to talk about it towards the end of the meeting. You'll notice in the item, and we really already have taken action on this item back in the summer, that the council retains the opportunity to interview if they so choose, once the recommendations come in from the committee. Thank you.
All right, procedural motions. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post 5-0. Thank you. Hey, item number one is a public hearing. This is a time and place here to forfeit for public hearing. Consideration of possible action to adopt an ordinance extending the moratorium on permit issuance for marijuana-related land uses within the city to allow the city additional time to consider remanding Title 15 of the El Segundo Municipal Code. The proposed ordinance is not subject to environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Sections 15060(c)(2) and 15060(c)(3) of the SECA guidelines because it is an activity that will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect change to the environment, and is not defined as a project under Section 15378, fiscal impact none. City Clerk, was proper notice of a hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
And has any written communication been received regarding the public hearing?
None has been received.
So the public hearing is now open. City Manager will make the presentation.
Our city attorney, Mark Henzley, will make this presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is an extension of the urgency ordinance with regard to marijuana uses within the city, which includes, under the current law that was passed last November, the potential for recreational sales of marijuana, deliveries of marijuana within the city, cultivation, although cultivation with regard to people cultivating within their home is permitted, and the council can't really curtail that. And there's a maximum, I should note this off the top of my head, between four and six plants. If they don't, six. Thank you, Greg. And so this is, the council last year took action to permanently, at the time, with regard to permitting and licensing under the city's health and safety codes and business license codes, to not allow these uses. On the land use section, which is the zoning code section, the city just took an urgency ordinance action to prohibit it. There have been ongoing, there's been ongoing monitoring of this by staff, but given that the state is not going to be issuing retail licenses until January, there's really not been a lot of activity to watch from staff's point of view as far as actual experiences by cities within California. This law is really just kind of starting to ramp up. In fact, the state has said it may be delayed in issuing the retail permits that it's supposed to issue. They're pretty far behind the ball, as I understand it. And we may not know something for some time. There's been staff in my offices attended some meetings that have been, there's been discussion because the states of Seattle and Colorado currently allow some of these uses. There have been concerns raised about the inability to really monitor the THC levels in blood as far as usage and what kind of safety issues that raise with regard to driving. And there's no standard yet that's been developed by the states as far as blood THC levels. There are issues with regard to banking, that these businesses cannot really use banks. They're cash businesses, which creates issues. And some of these are being discussed in the newspaper or being written about in the newspaper, probably reading about them. Talk of creating a banking system just for the marijuana business. I don't know whether that will occur or not, but you know, there are creative solutions potentially that are going to come forward. The Planning Commission did meet and discuss this a couple of weeks ago, and their recommendation was to continue monitoring the issues that are occurring. As the staff report states, there was a poll taking within the city, but that the information was not really conclusory. And if you have some questions about that, I would have the planning, building, and safety staff come forward to bond with those questions. Tonight, what's in front of you is to extend the moratorium for another 12 months, and it would take a four-fifth vote of council. I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. So the public hearing is now open for public input?
Suzanne, may I ask a question real quick? Just, Mark, can you clarify one thing? I had learned in a workshop recently that the moratoriums might be, could be legally challenged. Can you touch on that and what the precedent is there, if any?
Moratoriums are more subject to an attack than the standard ordinance being adopted. That is, an ordinance that's introduced and then had a second reading, and then 30 days later becomes effective. The reason is that you're making special findings within an urgency ordinance, and people can challenge those findings. And whereas, in a normal ordinance where you have discretion over this issue, there's really not, particularly with regard to marijuana, really not an ability to challenge or determination. One of the things we can do is we can come back in relatively short order. We'd have to go to the Planning Commission first and then come back to you. We can come back with an ordinance that would permit ordinance that would prohibit marijuana uses in the city. We could do that, be back to you within about 30, 45 days.
But you're not too concerned about the legal risk of a moratorium at this point?
Well, we have a couple of issues. We have prevented this from a permitting point of view from being opened in the city. And so that's, and that's been done permanently as a change to our code. You can't get a business license, from a health and safety code perspective and our business license code, you can't get a business license for these uses. So that's one layer of protection. We think we have findings in the urgency ordinance. ordinance that are, should cover the city with regard to adopting the urgency ordinance. Again, there's always some risk. A permanent ordinance is certainly more defensible than an urgency ordinance.
And then the survey that was, I know like 60% plus of El Segundo voters were in favor of Prop 94, or 64, 64. But as it relates to El Segundo specifically and doing business here, the survey results were somewhat inconclusive? Is that what I understand?
Correct. And if staff wants to come forward, they are attached to the staff report. But if, obviously, these were done and not, is what I would understand to be necessarily a poll that is statistically reliable. So Greg McLean, why don't you go ahead and respond?
Yeah, that is correct. This was, this was an online poll, and also conducted in person at the farmer's market. We left copies at the library and at the Jocelyn Center. So it's not a scientific poll. And the results nevertheless were basically inconclusive. It broke about 50/50 on most questions, slightly more in favor on some and others. And so at this point, we really can't conclude anything from that. But it does not match up with how the voters voted on Prop 64, because this was more narrowly focused on the land use issues. But unfortunately inconclusive at this time. We'll probably conduct a further poll down the road if this, if we are going to explore this further. We have a year, and we can, we can take the temperature then, maybe refine the questions. That's optional, of course. Thank you.
If anybody wants to speak for this public hearing, now is the time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Thank you. Council discussion.
I just had one question on the ordinance, the way it's written on the delivery. Is that the end destination of the delivery and not pass-through of the city?
That's correct. We cannot prevent cars or deliveries passing through the city. We can prevent them from stopping in the city, or from making deliveries in the city.
How are we going to do that from an enforcement standpoint?
Well, I think we talked about this at the last council meeting, or the one before, that we can prohibit something, it's going to be difficult to track down. So that's, that's always a problem with certain issues or events that occur in the city, that we can prohibit certain things, but not always easy to enforce. Now, as they report sales, and they should be subject to sales tax, how much of that gets reported to, and I suspect that the way this will work is that these will be done on a, although I have to verify this, given that the sales will happen throughout LA County, and they'll be hard to track to certain points, these might be such that the county takes the sales tax, or the Board of Legalization takes the sales tax, and equally divides it amongst the county, cities they're in. So we may not be able to trace businesses doing business in the city directly. We could still require them to get permits, business license permits from the city. Again, but it could raise the same issue, is if someone's going to drive to make a delivery to a resident in the city, and we have a law that prevents that, are they going to care if we allow it, but require them to get a business license permit? That is, are they really going to get one from us?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I need the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only.
An interim ordinance of the City of El Segundo extending the moratorium on permit issuance for marijuana-related land uses within the city to allow sufficient time for the city to consider amending Title 15 of the El Segundo Municipal Code is ready for adoption. Again, takes four votes in the council.
Thank you. So we can waive the further reading and adopt it with four affirmative votes required to pass. So now you can, so Dr. Brand made a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Thank you. Let's see. Next public hearing. This is the time and place here to forfeit for a public hearing. Consideration of possible action regarding environmental assessment, number EA 1180, and Zone Text Amendment, number ZTA 17-01, to allow short-term rentals through a short-term rental unit permit process in the city's residential zoning districts. The proposed project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to 14 California Code Regulations, 15301 as a Class 1 existing facilities, 15303 as Class 3 new construction or conversion of small structures, 15304 as Class 4 minor alteration to land categorical exemptions, and as a Class 8 categorical exemption, since the amendment will assure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, or protection of the environment where the regulatory process involves procedures for the protection of the environment, fiscal impact none. City Clerk was proper notice of a hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
And have you received any written communication?
I have not. We have not.
So the public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter?
Counsel, we had multiple departments working on this, and the presentation will be made by Eduardo Schoenborn from our Planning Department, and Juliana DeMurs from Finance.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Something's up there. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you does relate to short-term rentals. So back in November 2016, staff presented the city council with the topic of short-term rentals, as it had seen a large surge recently online and in the industry. And after a presentation on the topic, council directed staff to look into developing a regulatory process. So staff has been actively involved with the South Bay Cog over the past year or so. They have a working group on the topic of short-term rentals, and it's helped us to gather information and hear experiences from other cities and how they've dealt with the topic of short-term rentals. In the summer, this past summer 2017, staff conducted a survey that was posted on the city's website, made available at the Jocelyn Center and library, to obtain the public's input, their opinions on short-term rentals, which found that most people are okay with the concept of short-term rentals within the City of El Segundo. So staff approached this issue as a team, as Mr. Carpenter has indicated. It consisted of representatives from the Planning Department, Finance, Business Licensing, Revenue, Police Department, Fire Department as well was brought into, into the fold, as well as our city attorney, representatives from our city attorney's office. So the idea was also presented to the Chamber of Commerce and also to EDAC, both of which were supportive and had no objection to creating such a process to regulate short-term rentals. So as we worked our way through this process, staff acknowledges, I mean, obviously, there are several options before us to consider. Do you ban them? Do nothing and kind of leave the status quo? Or do you come up with permitting short-term rentals with certain controls and regulations? So to take each of these options in order here, so option one was, is banning short-term rentals. So working with the cog and doing research of other cities, what we found was that banning increases the need for enforcement. I think there's no doubt about that. Some cities have taken on the task of monitoring websites, where code enforcement staff is at their desk, kind of monitoring the websites to find listings. But there's so many platforms out there, and some may close and others will pop up, and so it's kind of hard to kind of keep track of them and constantly monitoring them. So it does, it does take up a good amount of staff time, which could have otherwise been used for other activities. Some cities actually contract that service with certain companies to monitor websites for listings. These companies will monitor dozens of websites at a time. They provide a monthly report to the city. But obviously, that comes with a cost. So there are a couple companies' outfits out there that do this specifically for public agencies. And again, that comes with either monthly or an annual cost. And then obviously, there's the additional costs of actually enforcing if there's, if it's found that there are some listings out there that shouldn't be out there. So then you have additional staff time and resources trying to hunt down those listings and violators. So what was also found is that it precludes the collection of TOT tax, and that revenue source, which might otherwise fund other enforcement efforts or activities. And lastly, bans have limited to short-term success. One of the, an example I'll kind of put out there is, a couple of months ago during our, during one of the cog meetings, we, there was a representative from another city that was present, and that city had, for a while, was struggling with short-term rentals, and they ultimately decided to adopt a ban. And so, you know, there was, they had identified over 100 different short-term rentals, and these were problem issues. And so they passed this ban, and they increased fines to the thousands of dollars to, you know, for operating short-term rentals within the city. And, you know, and, you know, the representative was touting, you know, how this ban has been successful. And, you know, they reduced it from, you know, literally hundreds of short-term rentals down to, down to three in town. And so as he's speaking, I go ahead and I take out my trusty iPhone. I'm going to the, to the short-term rental website. I won't say which one it is, but it's a popular one. And I pull up the city that he's talking about, and what do I find? You know, I found in that city, there's, you know, 52 listings. And that's just on the west side of town. And, you know, going on the east side of town, you know, there was, you know, another 35. So there's over 80, almost 90 listings. So I guess it all depends on how you want to define success, but it seems to me like there's more than just the three that they were touting. So anyhow, I give this example just because, you know, it is a real-life situation. I mean, this does exist. So, you know, you will run into that situation where if, as we have seen, where you have a ban in some place, yes, it's nice on the face of it, but the reality is, is that with today's technology, it's really tough to get a handle on, and really tough to really, you know, do away with these short-term rentals. So the second option is do nothing, you know. But then again, that comes with its own issues. You know, you have loss of revenue opportunities, and ultimately, there creates kind of an unfair competition, especially it creates a disadvantage to the city's hotel industry. And hotels are required to collect and submit TOT. So that's one of the things that doing nothing would result in. Because again, they likely, the likelihood is that these short-term rentals will continue to operate. So the third option is to permit short-term rentals through a permit process. So the permit process offers controls through operating conditions to minimize impacts, provides the city with additional revenues, revenues that can help offset enforcement efforts and take time to deal with, you know, for violations and issues that arise. So how would it work? Well, in terms of a short-term permit process, when a request comes in to the city, what we would envision is that business licensing will check to ensure that there's no outstanding debt that is owed to the city. So for example, all utility bills are paid upfront, you know, there's no lagging indebtedness that is owed to the city, either utilities, parking ticks, it's fines, et cetera. And then the business license and the short-term rental permit would be processed. So one of the things that, it would then, actually what would ultimately occur is, after that's taken in, goes to the Planning Department. So from a planning standpoint, we would, we would be in charge of ensuring or verifying ownership, since the permit would only be allowed to be issued to the property owner. And that's important, because the last thing we want to have happen is someone leases the house, the house or the property, and then sublets the, and then, you know, creating additional revenue and just, you know, creating some issues between the owner and the tenant. So ultimately, when an application does come in, that's one of the things we would be verifying, is the ownership. And that particular permit would be issued only to the actual owner of the property. A couple of other things that we'll also be looking at is ensuring that it is being issued to an actual house or an accessory dwelling unit, condominium, if that is the case. Or in the case of an apartment, we would be issuing it to just only one apartment, not to multiple units of an apartment building, because the last thing we want to have happen is that kind of turns into a de facto motel or hotel. And the reason behind this is that we want to make sure that, again, if someone's going to stay there, that they're staying in the house. Because what we have seen, you know, just even perusing some of these websites, these short-term websites, is that someone will post on there that, you know, they're renting out a tent in their backyard, or something like that. So we don't want to get into that. We're not going to, you know, allow for that type of operation. It would just, would need to be strictly confined to the actual house or the structures that are on there, on the property. So other things that we'll be looking at is that the property owner has signed an affidavit. And that's important, because the, it does have some operational conditions attached to it. And some of the, some of the issues would, that we try to address through conditions would be occupancy or number of guests that are staying at the, at the short-term rental, parking, signage, making sure that there's no onsite signage that advertises the property. I'm sorry, going back to the parking, what we'd be looking at is that there's parking available for guests of the short-term rental. Ultimately, it's hard to mandate that they actually use it, but at least there is parking available onsite, so that way it reduces that potential for street parking. Other things that we'd be, that the affidavit would ensure, and some of the conditions, is that the, that there's, that the property is maintained in an orderly and neat manner, that, you know, you don't have trash, and all that is contained onsite and away from the public view. And also operational conditions with regards to unreasonable noise and disturbances. So once it gets through planning, Fire Department would also be involved. They would conduct a site visit to the, to the application, or the applicant on record. They're going to be looking at life safety issues, for example, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers, making sure those things are available within the building as well. Then, once that's approved, or the permit is issued, then kind of the ongoing monitoring and enforcement is then done by, you know, Finance and Police and Code Enforcement. But from a finance standpoint, they will monitor and ensure that TOT is collected, and that would be done on a monthly basis, and that would, and they would continue to monitor, making sure that all the other fees that are associated with the property are continued to be updated and paid in full, for example, again, utilities and all that. So I'd like to get in a little bit, and I'll hand this over to Juliana, who's with our Finance Department, just to kind of give a real brief example, if you will, in terms of the potential revenue that could be, that we could potentially see from establishing a short-term rental process. Again, there would be certain business license fees, and I'll let her kind of get into that a little bit as well.
Good evening. So here, what I put it together is just a slide to make it clear, and, you know, for the property owner or the applicant, how much that would cost as far as all the city fees that we would be charging. So proposing this registration application, one-time cost of $250, and business license fee, which the currently fee this year would be $103. fee, which the currently fee this year would be $103 and 12% of gross receipts for the transient occupancy tax. If we base that a property would be rented 150 days a year at $150 nightly rate, this property owner would probably be generating about $22,000 and minus the $200 and 50, $250 fee, $103 business license, and that's approximately $2,700 in TOT. The cost of operation would be $3,053 for the first year. And on the following years, the registration fee would be just a renewal fee of $150 and the operation cost moving forward would be $2,953 for the applicant. As far as those numbers, how does those numbers look for the city? So under that same case study, and we believe that is approximately 100 short-term rentals operating in the city right now, at the same 150 days per rental property at an average daily rate of $150, we would be generating on the first year about $305,000 and on the following years about $295. So this is pretty much what the revenue would be looking like if we enforce those short-term rentals.
Yeah, I just wanted her to kind of give a brief example and, and the numbers are based on 100 listings. The reality is that, you know, over the past several months as we, you know, we'll spot check different, different websites, we've seen at least within the city of El Segundo, on average anywhere as, as low as 118 on some sites to upwards of like 129 listings that are within the city of El Segundo. So again, I mean, that's quite a number. I mean, I, you know, at least from, from a staff's perspective, code enforcement perspective, we obviously have one of those that has been kind of a thorn in, in, in the community's side, but we're trying to deal with that. But nonetheless, you know, the, the numbers that you see out there are based on around number of 100. So assuming if all 100, 100 listings were, were to be rented out. So anyhow, so to kind of wrap this up, with ultimately with the monitoring of the, of the permit, you would have police and code enforcement, which would always be on call and they would do, conduct visits or service calls depending on the nature and time of the, of the call. They would retain the ability to, to do what they need to do in order to address any immediate issues that, that, that come up. And they would work closely together to monitor the short-term rentals because what we envision is that if after, you know, two or three violations, serious violations, and again, that would be to the discretion of, of the code enforcement and police department, that we do retain the ability to pull that permit and then at that point go more into the legal realm and, and try to, to, you know, if, if they decide to continue to operate, we'd have more teeth, if you will, to, to try to go after these violators. So with that, staff, as, as indicated in the staff report, is seeking the council's direction on this and its feedback as to the handling of short-term rentals in El Segundo. If the city council is so inclined, it can direct staff to come, prepare an ordinance and come back with the, allowing short-term rentals through a permit process and that could be brought back to the city council relatively quickly. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So I have some questions, but I think I'll wait, I'll hold mine till after public communication. Does anybody have anything? Okay. So the public hearing is now open for public input.
My name is Gary Schmunk. I live at 415 Concord Street. I just want to say I've had the good fortune of being behind one of the worst short-term rentals in the city, probably. There could possibly be worse, but this is pretty bad at 416 Concord, I'm sorry, 416 Virginia. I guess I'm confused with what R1 is becoming. It's becoming to me, I guess you should actually call it R-whatever because it's not R1 anymore. That's not what I bought. So who's going to help me if I have a bad Airbnb or VROB behind me when I go to sell my house and I have to disclose that and lose value or can't sell it because of that situation? I guess I'm shocked and insulted that revenue is going to be put more important than the peaceful, quiet El Segundo I bought into. I, I guess I don't understand where the city's going at this point. The whole thing with the accessory dwelling, I'm not quite certain how that fits in the picture, but my understanding is that that could as well be part of the short-term rental program, which is a bit concerning. So what is my neighborhood now going to become from the quiet neighborhood it was? The problem we've had is loud parties. The houses rented out, loud parties, general noise, drunken fights, pick one, it all goes on. It's like a fraternity house. It's like living next door to a fraternity house. The situation has gotten a little bit better, but the problem is we never know when it's going to be bad. When am I going to be woken up at two or three in the morning by the bad neighbor that rented the Airbnb? A little different than having your regular neighbor next door, who you know who it is, has a vested interest in the neighborhood. And the other problem you have here in the city is what's to keep investors from coming in, buying up properties because it's so financially beneficial to rent these out at this higher daily rate than you could lease them for on a monthly basis to a regular renter? So that changes the whole picture of the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned, which is just a great inconvenience to us neighbors that have to put up with it. Now everybody says, well, you got the bad one. Well, any one of you could have the next bad one next door. That could be you. I want you to really think about that. It's just we got the luck of the draw. They've been operating like this for well over a year and I just, I don't know why we're afraid to say no for things that are just wrong and don't fit the picture of what we want El Segundo to be. I understand the whole VR, VROB and Airbnb, what it started out to be is swapping homes a few days a rental, that type of thing. This one's operated as a hotel 365 days a year. Now we're going to reduce it to 150, but that, to me, that's not any better. I still could have 150 days of inconvenience in the middle of the night or during the day. So yeah, that, that are my, that's what my concerns about this situation with the short-term rentals is. Thank you.
Mona Eisman, 415 Concord Street, also fortunate to live next to Girls Gone Wild or what was that Bernie's movie? Okay. Weekend at Bernie's. Okay. Couple of things that I want to, and I have some prepared, but I want to respond to. I am disappointed that the major concern from the people that our tax dollars support is staff having to do a job to protect and support our community. Anything worthwhile, that's what we're all here for. What you're here for is the city council and we appreciate it and what everyone here who works for the city is here for. So the fact that actually enforcing an ordinance might put a few extra paperwork and add a little bit extra work, I'm insulted by those comments. Okay? For starters, I'm insulted. The other thing is there's, it rents for 700 a night and the city is going to earn $3,000 a year? I'll just buy property and I'll start renting it out because the profits from doing this are tremendous. The appeal is tremendous for anyone. The appeal has been throughout the entire California community as well as around the country. That is why Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Rancho Palos Verdes, Redondo Beach, Santa Monica are all looking at severe bans to short-term rental. The most they're letting people do is on a limited number of nights, rent out their primary residence and be a pure home sharing residence, which was the original vision of Airbnb. They are not letting de facto hotels, thank you for the term, get put up in residential R1, R2, R3 neighborhoods. And that is what will happen. We all who are here tonight also went to a planning commission meeting and we put in a lot of feedback. And one of the feedback, which I did not hear in this proposal was we, it must be the primary residence. All of our neighbors up and down this beautiful coast, that is one of the requirements they are looking at, is that it's not to buy an income property and turn it into a de facto hotel. And that is what will happen. And if the concern is enforcement, let's look at the team we have in El Segundo and let's learn how to do it. It's not hard to enforce it. The beach cities, and I can quote you from the LA Times, from the Beach Reporter, from the Daily Breeze, from newspapers, they are all taking on this for their communities, for their neighbors, because it is an important issue. Technology moves forward. We're being confronted with an, an opportunity and an issue that we have to deal with. So to say we just can't solve it, isn't the answer. What do they say? Supply and demand. So Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, Santa Monica, Rancho Palos Verdes, all severely limited. We won't have 100 properties in El Segundo. We'll have hundreds because we will be the only beach community. Do you know people come here and think we're like right on the water? They don't realize that in between El Segundo and the water is actually a bunch of stuff, industrial things. They don't know before they come here and they won't. They're going to see advertising. And so be very, think very carefully that if we have the most lenient policy of all the beach communities up and down, we won't have 100 properties. We'll have hundreds, if not more, hundreds and hundreds because the demand is there. Now we have to decide if we want that demand in our neighborhood. Okay? So home sharing, very different than investment property, limited days, protect neighborhoods. Don't be for the profit of a few or the concern that it's too much work to enforce. This is a huge issue. You talked about fire and police. We call the police every single time. Is that what we want our police doing? Is it my job every time that is rented that the, that I have to call the police? All, we all do it and have them come? Fire. This is a lovely house. I think it's a, I think it's a four-bedroom. They put 30 people in. It is not safe. It is not to code. We have complained, we have made... And the city has not responded for ordinances. Home sharing, not hotels, not investment properties. Limited nights, preserve our community. Let's know our neighbors, keep them safe. Not places to make a profit as a hotel in an R1, R2, R3. LA is also limiting home sharing in R1, R2, R3. We will be the only ones. Do we want that? That what we want for our city? And by the way, you, as my husband said, we may live next to one now, but you open these floodgates, we'll all be living next to one.
Evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Veronica Bryce. I live at 419 Virginia Street, right across from the property that both Gary and Mona spoke about. However it's going to be handled, I wanted to come to you today to let you know of the safety issue. If they can, if I can hear it, that must mean that it's far more amplified for them, but I'm across the street, directly across from them. And it is very, it's random and sometimes it gets really loud and on our street, my next door neighbor, now there's two more families that live on our side of the street. It can be really disruptive. I've had two separate incidents where people in the middle of the night have parked on my driveway or have come into, onto my property, thinking that it was my house or they were looking for this house. And last one being in, in August, when I actually came to the planning commission meeting to let them know that, you know, at two o'clock in the morning, someone had come off of an airplane, thinking that our back, our back house, our office actually above our garage was the Airbnb. The parking situation gets tricky. I've had my, my driveway blocked several times because to Mona's point, they sometimes have teams come and groups of people come. And it's just this constant in and out. So however it's going to be enforced, I really would like the consideration of everyone else along that street, you know, with families that are living there. And it does get, it does get disruptive. So I thank you for your time. Please consider that and think about how it could apply to you because it could be the house next door to you or behind you or in front of you. Thank you for your time.
My name's Kathy Wishard and I live at 427 Concord. And I'm across the alley from, and a little bit north of the house we're talking about on Virginia. I no longer have trash cans because they're all dragged up to that location. Our alley is full of pool chemicals all the time. There was a fire at this location that the, the renters made, like a bonfire in the backyard. I looked out my back window and thought that, you know, there was a house on fire. Somebody called the fire department, I don't know who, but the fire was so thick, you know, that it was only these people having a bonfire, but it looked like the neighborhood was on fire. There's constant noise. It's, it's like Animal House every weekend. People are screaming, there's a pool, so there's, you know, people in the pool all the time, which is fine unless there's 30 people. I don't know what site you were looking at when you said there were 100 and something rentals in El Segundo, but I just pulled it up and it says 1,800 and something. And that's only the houses. There's an additional thousand something apartments listed here. I have the house we're talking about is one of the rentals that comes up here and it says right here sleeps 30. So, you know, it's a five-bedroom house. It's ridiculous. It's a hotel. She also rents out the garage to another party and he's a motorcycle mechanic. So he comes at night, works on motorcycles and revs engines and runs them up and down our alley and around the block all night long. So it's an unbearable situation. And if you don't put some kind of control on these short-term rentals, this could happen in every house and you wouldn't be able to stop it. And it's not fair to the people that are just trying to live a quiet life. So, thank you.
I don't see any more people to speak. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, depending on what you do, because staff is looking for some direction on drafting an ordinance and depending on what you direct staff to do and when you want it brought back, you might want to keep this public hearing open and continue it to a date certain in the future if you want this brought back so it doesn't have to be re-noticed.
I like that. Can we have a discussion, a council discussion?
Sure.
With it open?
Sure.
Okay. Because I was going to request a continuance, so then we will keep public communications open. Council comments.
I got a question. Just to address the public comment that was made, I guess in the planning commission, it was suggested that there was an intent to allow for primary residence only. Maybe you could clarify that, Eduardo? And then... And then I'd also like to know how many property complaints there have been in the last, I don't know, Airbnb's been very relevant for, let's say, three years. VRBO's been around 20 years. How many property complaints have there been within the last three years? Individual properties, if you guys have the info on that.
So with, with regards to your first question, the, the planning commission during their discussion did speak about perhaps having the residents be the primary residents. And they also discussed perhaps looking into having a cap on the maximum number of days or nights that a short-term rental can be rented out for in any given year. So that, that was discussed, that did not make it into the motion to, but it most certainly is something that we can continue to look into. As you heard from the public yesterday, even I have read some cities out there who are looking into putting a cap on there. The big question mark on that is, is again, you know, realistically, the enforceability of that. I mean, we also have to take it from a practical standpoint as well. So in terms of the number of complaints or problem properties, if you will, in my short tenure here, the only one that I've been made aware of is the one on Virginia Street. That one is, is, like I said earlier, is, seems to be a, a big thorn in the side of that community, which is very unfortunate. And they did speak at, at the planning commission. And so what, what we did is, our code enforcement officer had-
Rather than get into details of particular properties, it was brought forward as an example, which I think is appropriate, but to get into the details of code enforcement on a particular property is-
No, Mark, I'm looking for numbers.
I was actually kind of cutting him off politely.
Thank you. But I'd like to get a sense of number of complaints. Sounds like there's been one. Is that right?
Yes. And again, I've been here about a year and change. But with the previous two years, I know you wanted the last three years, I would have to defer to perhaps my director about that.
Okay.
We had somebody come to a council meeting who lived at a cul-de-sac on the west end of town. And I don't know if it was Maple or Mariposa, I don't remember, but there was one that was troublesome there as well.
Okay. And you've been working with COGS, South Bay Council of Governments. And the way I understood it, Hermosa Beach had tried, maybe it's Manhattan, they'd tried a ban, but what they discovered was it's very easy to suggest that it's more than a 30-day lease, which then disqualifies it from being a short-term rental with like a $3 lease break or it's free. Basically, anything that they tried to do, had tried to do from a regulatory standpoint had been undone. Are they still experiencing that same thing? I heard over here that all the other cities around us are banning, or seriously considering banning. Is that factual in nature, or? Well, can you give me more background basically on what's happening around us?
Yes. So for example, Manhattan Beach, they had passed an ordinance to ban, and there were some, I guess, previously, previous to that, there was some allowance, and there was some short-term rentals that were grandfathered in that would be phased out. But as, as we speak now, there is, there is a ban on short-term rentals within Manhattan Beach. Redondo Beach currently has a ban as well, although they are looking into potentially allowing them in existing non-conforming residential structures that are within commercial districts. So not within residentially zoned areas, but in residences that happen to be located in commercial areas. Rancho Palos Verdes has, has passed a ban. And in doing so, they also increased the fines that are applicable to, to those who violate that particular ordinance. It runs, I think, anywhere from 1,000 to upwards of $5,000 for, for violating their ordinance. So other, other things that we-
Was RPV the one? I think it was. You showed with 100 listings. How current was that?
Uh, that was, that was about a month ago, if that.
And when did their change in ordinance go into effect?
That went into effect earlier this year.
So the gentleman who spoke about R1, I agree with you, there is no such thing as R1 in California anymore. Our state legislature has decided that every property can have two units on it, no matter how much you spent to buy your home in an R1 neighborhood, they've decided that you don't deserve that. And I think that short-term rentals are contrary. They are with this new brilliant R1 law that they have. They, it's to provide more housing in California. But when you put something on the market for short-term rental, you have removed housing in California. So it's, it's completely contrary. So, but don't look to them for logic. You know, I, I'm sorry for what you're experiencing. That certainly is my concern. Let's see, I had. I had made a note that now I can't find. It might come to me later. But I, I myself have done short-term rentals when I travel, but I do them in a resort that has parking, and that's what it's made for, not for going into somebody's neighborhood. So I'm sorry that you're experiencing that. And I'm guessing, even though we don't hear about it, you might not be the only ones who are experiencing, but you have organized and come here to tell us about that. And I appreciate that. Again, there was somebody who came from a cul-de-sac on the west end of town. I don't remember what street it is, but I think we need more information on this. And just like we didn't want to be the only city in El Segundo that allowed RV parking, I agree, we don't want to be the only city in, at the South Bay that allows short-term. So, you know, I, I met with staff and I discussed this, you know, full disclosure that I was open to some of the things they were suggesting, so I don't want them to think I completely pivoted on them, because I don't like to surprise staff like that. But you've certainly given us more information to consider this evening.
We didn't, I noticed we didn't touch on the survey results. Was that intentional? Or maybe we didn't get to it yet? I don't think we did.
No, I did provide that, just as more background information.
Okay. Just for the audience, I think it's interesting to note that over 620 people responded to a survey regarding short-term, short-term rentals. 55% have used a short, short, I don't know if you guys have seen this, maybe this was covered in the planning commission, if it was, I apologize. 55% have used a short-term rental when on vacation or on business travel. These are residents, I think, right? Ideally. 76% of residents would not consider offering their home as a short-term rental unit. 62% do not consider the short-term rental to be a problem. And 54% believe short-term rentals should be allowed in El Segundo. I mentioned this to, because when I walked, I walked every single door in this home and got in touch with a lot of people in person, homes, apartments, et cetera. And most of the people that I spoke to on this issue were pro Airbnb, not against. Now, I know you guys are having issues, and I completely, completely, I might have missed you at your door. And I live on 332 Whiting, so if you need to come talk to me, I'm right there, because I'm probably going to hear it at some point, too, it sounds like. I only bring that up to suggest that there's a, there are a fair amount of people in town that want the flexibility for Airbnbs for their property. So you have a problem? If there have been two complaints in a year? I'm not saying that that's all that's out there, but I think we do need to look at this a little bit further. And I, for one, think that we need to, it's not going away. Airbnb, VRBO's been around 20 years. It only became popular with Airbnb, because Airbnb made a better mousetrap, and they did better what VRBO has been doing for many years. And short-term rentals in El Segundo have been around for a long time. It's just more efficient now in the way in which we're going about it. So to think that we're going to regulate this away, or the ban's going to work, I don't believe that for a second. It's not about the enforcement dollars, the finite dollars that we have available to do this. It's that we'll create a regulation, and they'll get around it. It's already happened in other cities. So that's what I think.
Before you speak, Sam, I want to say, I want to address your comment about being insulted that staff can't enforce it. That's not the case. There's companies out there that do it, that are much better equipped and have the, the analytics and the analogs and everything to do it. So staff was fully intending to hire the right people to do it, but to have one staff member poking along on VRBO, or HomeAway, or Airbnb, or whatever the new tool is, that doesn't make sense. So it's not that they weren't going to do it, it's that, it's not an effective use of staff time. Sam?
Counsel, if I could make a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
As the, as the survey report shows, the 62% that you mentioned were people who, where we asked, are you, do you know of a short-term rental in your neighborhood? And of those people, 62% think that, didn't think it was a problem. So there is a high percentage of people who don't think it's a problem, but clearly there is, to me, a clear distinction of people who don't mind short-term rentals, but majority, I would say 90-plus percent of the people absolutely do not like party houses, right? So I think we need to separate short-term rental and party houses. And so when, when, when staff talked about conditions of approval, that's a contract between the city and the, and the owners that are, that are agreeing to do this. And if they don't, if they break that contract, we would have the right to revoke their permit. So if I could suggest, there's a group of people who've clearly experienced the party house. Staff could work with them, come up with maybe the right conditions that could make this work. If not, we'll come back with a option of banning.
I love that. And it's one point I failed to mention. I mean, to me, right now, we have no regulatory teeth whatsoever. So they're flying under the radar, and there's nothing we can do. Barring them breaking the law, right? And police having to be dispatched, we have no grounds to say you cannot do what you're doing. So at least with a regulation, we have the means to enforce and to say, here are the rules that you have to play by, and if you don't play by the rules, you don't get renewed for next year, and you possibly get revoked a permit.
I wouldn't-
I don't think that's accurate.
I wouldn't, I would take them conclusion, there's nothing we can do. One, a, renting a business that's not licensed, which is an issue, under our code, these are not permitted. Now, there can be some argument about what our code says, but I think there's a good argument, they're not permitted. Now, that doesn't mean they're not coming into town and establishing themselves. I understand that. There's a difference between what we regulate and what we can actually enforce. It's a difficulty.
I agree, Mark, but how many other businesses are in town that don't have a license?
I don't know.
Hundreds, hundreds of businesses. Any landsc, pick a landscaper. I mean, we're going down a rabbit hole here, so.
I understand.
I-
But we have tried to enforce gardeners getting-
We've tried to enforce many things. My point is-
I was just responding to your comment that there, there's nothing we can do about the moment.
Realistic and practical thing that we could do.
With regard to this, well, if we have a property that's a party house, there are things we can do. I don't want to say that there's nothing we can do about that. With regard to Airbnbs, to the extent that they're probably quiet and they're well-run-
So help me, help me understand, Mark. Maybe we could play out, because Sam suggested something different. Help me understand what we can do. Police have been dispatched, fire have been dispatched, right? What are next steps for the city?
Well, I don't want to talk about their case in particular, but what we would do is write compliance letters to the property owner, and if they don't comply, we would file either some sort of civil injunction or criminal. Now, it's, it's a misdemeanor, and we're not talking about a felony, but we'd file misdemeanor charges under our zoning ordinance for violation, violation of our zoning ordinance and also our business license code.
And timeline?
Uh, that depends. Most people, we get a lot of compliance from letters. Now, to the extent that they're kind of thumbing our nose at us, it could take us several months to get in front of a criminal court judge at most points. People kind of lose their backbone then when they're standing in front of a judge in a criminal court and don't want to fight it. So it just, you know, there's sort of a continuum, if you will, and some people will fight it to the very end. But we get compliance on a large percentage upfront. If we, if we know where they are, and we know who to write to, and those kinds of things, again, we're talking about, much easier to spot a party house than it is a quietly operating Airbnb.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, Sam, what were the penalties of those for people who did not register, who, who did not obtain the permit but went up and put their houses up on Airbnb? Have we, do we, have we identified a penalty?
There is no penalty.
We don't have-
No, but I mean, if we pass, within the new ordinance, in the new ordinance?
New ordinance? I think we're talking about $1,000. Yeah. First, for the first offense, $1,000, and it goes up from there.
And then if they, if we revoke the permit according, in the new ordinance, and then they continue, is the same penalty offense?
Well, it's penalty offense, and then it'll go into the court system, and it'll take that course.
So I have a question about police calls for nuisances. Is there a charge when the police are called out for multiple nuisances at the same-
Address.
Address?
Maybe that's something we could-
I have to double-check our, it's been a while, but I think we have a large, a large, loud party ordinance, which is probably adopted like 15 years ago.
Okay. So if you get called out once, you're okay, but then?
There's usually a warning that goes with it, and then if you're called out again, the, there could be a charge that goes with it for the second call. And so if there's a process in our, our code for loud parties.
So maybe we need to look at that and make sure it's being reinforced.
I think, I think that's accurate. There is, there's a process where the police's cost can be associated to the people who are not in compliance. In my discussion with the police department, they're pretty hesitant to use that for the neighborhood people. But certainly if, if there's people from out-of-towners and whatnot that are non-resident folks, I think they would-
Well, if it's, if it's multiple calls, I mean, anybody can have a loud party once in a lifetime, you know, you understand a celebration. But if it's week after week after week, I see Police Chief Wayland standing up.
But just to, just to add some clarification, yes, we do have a loud party ordinance. And generally, it's an officer can go out, give a warning, and then if they go back to the same location within 30 days, they can give a second notice, which is then a violation, and the person gets fined. It really isn't disproportionately applied. I don't want to give the impression that certain people get a pass and others don't. But it's also about the spirit and intent of the law. And the spirit and intent of the law is to prevent exactly what's going on here. So if there was a problem location, they would be getting a lot more attention than, say, somebody that just happened to have a, pick a random reason why they had a party or something. So there is discretion that is, is applied in these sorts of situations. I'm going to, when this meeting's over, I'm going to give this group my business card so that we can talk offline, and I can see if we can maybe direct some more resources at it and come up with a collaborative response with other city departments to see if we can address this. I wasn't aware of this problem, but certainly put some resources at it and see if we can help these folks with what they're experiencing. Because it does sound like some of what they're experiencing is something that I do have some purview over, so we'll certainly be taking a look at that.
Thank you, Chief. Great hire, city manager. Okay. So please, Chief Wayland will speak to you. Our public communications are still open. Can, so can somebody come up?
If the council invites somebody up to ask some questions.
How long are you going to be here?
We'll give you just a- Okay. Let's put our house aside for a moment, and let me, and even though we've brought this for more than 12, 18 months, let's, let me have faith and trust that it, that we brought it here and we're going to get something resolved. There is a bigger issue. Do we want de facto hotels in our residential neighborhoods? Okay? Home sharing is different when the, it is owner-occupied, it is a room, maybe it's a swap of a week. I don't believe that what the staff has brought you, they've brought you a license to open de facto hotels of 150 nights occupancy versus the, the spirit of home sharing, which is what Airbnb, I know they want to be bigger, I get the technology of it, I'm an entrepreneur myself, okay? But that is not what I believe. In our community, we want people in homes with their kids in schools. We want them going to play Babe Ruth baseball. We don't want them coming just as tourists and having homes spotted throughout our residential area that are de facto hotels. So I would like when this stays into discussion, because we had extensive discussion in planning commission, it did not make the final recommendation, to talk about the, the ways that around the country, they're talking about this. And again, I would say, do you want to know your neighbor? And that's yes. Now, if your neighbor rents a room, or does a home swap occasionally, we say, that's okay. But if your neighbor is using, has created a de facto commercial hotel property, that shouldn't be okay. So there are ways, and if you don't limit the days, you're going to limit the, the financial op- the financial opportunity is so great that we have to limit the days they can rent to less than the financial opportunity presents. Otherwise, it, again, we're all entrepreneurs, free market. These homes, more and more homes will become de facto hotels. Maybe quieter than the one on Virginia, but still de facto hotels. Not families using our resources, members of our community. Okay? They want us to think.
Thank you, we'll, we'll take that under consideration.
To not make it about one bad unit.
No, I, I agree. And with, with increased crime because of Propositions forty-seven and fifty-seven, and AB 109, and see something, say something, and know your neighbors, and certainly El Segundo, the residents are very tuned in to who's their neighbor and who belongs in their, their neighborhoods. And you make a very good point of we're erasing some of that. So any other comments, councils?
I do, yeah. I'm inclined to agree very closely with both Gary and Mona, to be honest with you. Because to, to me, the issue here becomes zoning. Did I buy a house in an R1 neighborhood to be next to a short-term rental? And the answer to that is absolutely not. And I align completely with you about, there's plenty of families in town I know that rent houses, and they're there, and their children are engaged in the community, and I have no problem with that kind of a house rental unit, right? If you've got a family in there, you've got a, you know, a couple in there, even an individual that's there in a long term, that's part of the neighborhood, part of the community, they belong in an R1 neighborhood. Transients do not belong in an R1 neighborhood. Absolutely, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's the, the issue right now. Now, knowing that, and knowing we have enforcement issues, I, I also met with staff, and I voiced my opinion that, you know, you make it sound like this is going to happen no matter what we do, and so we're better off making rules so that we can enforce something here. And I don't agree with that philosophy. I think the philosophy is more of a, how do we maintain the integrity of an R1 neighborhood? I don't have the answers to that. I have no idea, but I'm not convinced that actually putting together some kind of an ordinance, some kind of a code, or some kind of a process that permits this kind of activity so we can regulate it more closely. I mean, the, the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, there's three hundred thousand dollars of revenue out there on, you know, you know, if we have to hire one more person, by the time you benefit them and everything else, that's maybe two, one or two people, right? So that's a, that's a break-even to a loser from the start, from a money side. So this isn't a money issue. This is absolutely not a money issue, in my opinion. This is clearly a residential issue about what kind of families do I want in an R1 neighborhood? Do I want that to be anything more than a normative lease, which is today, thirty days plus, I think, in the state is a normative lease? I think that's the, you know, to me, that's what the community is about, and that's, that's what I would like to do. I don't know how to deal with this issue. We, we're going to have to do something, but I don't think permitting it and managing it is the right path forward. So thank you for your feedback.
Any other comments? Nope. Okay, so do we need a motion to continue?
Well, um, here's the question, and a couple council members haven't really expressed an opinion, which is fine, but we won't really come back with anything different, other than there's been some requests for some information. We can bring that back, but there's really been no direction given by council. Well, it's up to council whether you want to give tonight, or you want us to come back with some more information, have some further discussion. Your call.
I mean, I'm, and I would, would prefer that the ordinance be, has some additional language in there, that the focus is just, we're, we'd only allow the limited time and have house sharing, and that their owner-occupied requirement there.
How, how does one enforce owner-occupation?
I mean, that's what we, we'd have to go and look at it. I don't know, it's, it's a tough one. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, in regards with Mona, I agree that if people want to do, have rent out a room, I'm not okay with that, but I, I just don't feel that a whole house should be up for rental, day after day after day. So somehow, we have to come up with a solution, and maybe to Sam's point, they could meet, we could talk, have some additional conversations, look outside, look what other cities are doing, and see if we can tighten up the ordinance.
Dr. Brand, any comments? Okay. All right, so our direction to staff is more information about owner-occupied.
There were specific questions that council member, um, our Mayor Protamboils asked of staff, that we can bring back that information. And heard the comments, I think there's, um, there's different opinions by the councils. We can back, bring back different, or we can back information, and you can all think about it, and then we can.
Mark, what about the, um, someone suggested there were a thousand. I find that hard to believe, properties for listing in El Segundo that are on short-term rental, but let's assume they're a hundred and fifty, two hundred. Are we going to engage those people or not? Because we've heard from a group that have, have had a ba, very bad experience, that could have been solved, or can be solved from another mean, by another means. So are we going to engage the property owners in town who I spoke to when I campaigned that really want the flexibility with? And I understand your concern, Carol, about house swapping. Airbnb didn't necessarily start out that way, but it's closer to where they started. But that's, that's, there are companies that do that, like Home Exchange and others. The people that I spoke to, that's not going to fit their needs. That's not what they're looking for. They're not looking for, I want to get a house in Miami Beach, I'm going to give a week up here in El Segundo. So I only suggest that if we're going to do this the right way, and we're truly doing a public hearing, and we've already polled our people, and the majority of our residents who are familiar with Airbnb say they are not problematic, then we ought to do more outreach to engage those people.
And then is there, to the point where this particular property was offering, saying that it's up for thirty, thirty people can stay there, I mean, isn't there some controls we can put in place to ensure, like, that would fall into the fire department, to say, when you do a permit, that the maximum amount of residents could, that could be part of, that could live there or stay there would be X, right?
We can look into that.
How do you know, how do you know who's staying, right? You have a party at your house, you have thirty people over, and then you've got this, you know, I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but all these things that you try to come up with, it's, to me, I, I haven't heard anything yet that is illogical, how am I going to control this in a neighborhood? You can, you know, we're going to take one-at-a-time issues and try to deal with them here, and, and I think we're missing the boat. I think we're not on, we're not high enough up on the, on the ladder of issues here to deal with, how do you prevent this from happening? How do you make sure this doesn't happen? I mean, you know, it, it's a tough issue here, and I don't know what it is. So I, I'm, I'm kind of opposed to the piecemeal-ing thing that says we're going to look at this, look at this, look at this, and make that part of the ordinance, because we're going to miss half of it. And like, it's already been stated, people are going to be creative and find a way around it. And that's not the intent here, I don't think. I, I think the landowners and the residents and the people that have R1 lots have them for a reason. And I don't think they want these things. And I don't think that, that that survey is representative of my neighborhood. I really don't. I don't know where the numbers came from, but if you went and surveyed all the R1 homeowners and, and occupants right now, I don't think you'd have those kind of statistics. But I, without having data, I can't say that.
Can I answer your question?
No, we're not, we, we, we understand. We, you know, the, the issue's out there.
No, the point is.
No, no, the clo, the public communications, the hearing is closed, thank you. We gave you a second opportunity to speak, and we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you. Okay, so is that enough direction for staff to?
I mean, what I heard was, um, there's a council member that, or the Mayor Protam seems to be leaning in favor of these. I don't know, I mean, Mayor, you expressed some concerns about it. I think Councilmember Dugan has expressed his opinion, that doesn't want these in any shape or form, and Councilmember Persick may be open to allowing them in some form. So there's basically four different opinions. We haven't heard from Councilmember Brand yet, but when you say, do we have direction? We can bring back more information, but I think ultimately, the, three of the council members are going to have to agree on what we should do.
Okay, well, right now, I hear three council members that aren't in favor of it, so it could.
In different forms, yes.
Yes.
And I didn't say I wasn't in favor of it, I says not in the R1 neighborhoods. I think there may be some room in some zoning issues that'll deal with it. But there's, but this is, it's not an easy thing, and it's not going to get handled tonight, obviously.
So you're in favor of it in R2 or R3? I mean, those people have families too.
You know, but they also have multiple dwelling units that are zoned for multiple families. And I don't, you know, again, I, I haven't, I haven't got enough. We're, you know, it doesn't apply into my neighborhood, so I'm, I have to deal with that one. An R1 applies to me and my neighborhood, so I'm concerned about that more, but.
So Mayor, I, I would suggest, it doesn't look like we're going to move forward on this anytime soon, and, and we've got some, some information we can run down, we have some specific issues to work out. The South Bay Cog is still working on this issue. I would suggest that staff bring this back in January, after we've had some time to look at options, and also do some more outreach. Potentially, there are some, some easy ways for us to do more outreach and get more opinion on this issue.
Well, to Drew's point, maybe we can look at those, um, Airbnbs that are working, and just pool that, canvass the neighborhoods and say, you know, there's Airbnb going on here, be asking any issues, figure out how they're running their Airbnb. You know, is it, are they, are the ones that are working the sa, similar in that it's a room in a, in a, in a, in a house? Or are they the whole house? But we kind of really need to understand it.
Well, there's a variety of different types of short-term rentals in town. There's actually hot bunks and rooms where there's four bunk beds, and you can rent a bunk bed for the night, and then there's entire homes, so.
And just to reiterate, Planning Commission, was it a five-oh vote? What was the vote from the Planning Commission, no?
Correct, it was a five-oh.
Five-oh vote. How many hours roughly did they spend? These are the subject matter experts are relying on. How many hours did they spend researching this topic roughly, with staff?
Um, several hours, I, I would say.
Okay. And then, Mike, you know, it's not supposed to be easy. We're not up here for easy, we're up here for difficult. So I, I take issue with that. You made a similar comment a couple meetings back, and we're up here to make tough decisions and do the right thing that represents the vast majority of our residents.
And I didn't say I wasn't willing to do that. I'm telling you that what we're proposing today doesn't come close to meeting the concerns of the residents.
Okay. Well, that's the point, we don't know yet. We got to do outreach, right? We'll figure that out.
Dr. Brand?
So in general, the way I feel, and I came here in nineteen seventy to teach, is that we're losing our sense of community here in El Segundo. It's partly caused by the, uh, extremely high prices of single-family dwellings in this town. It creates new residents who don't know their neighbors, who don't participate in the town. They participate in trying to round up the money to pay the mortgage. They don't know what's going on in their neighborhoods. I kept running into folks like that when I was walking door-to-door, once I could start walking. And, uh, it's not like it was when I was teaching at Center Street School. It slipped away. This is another encroachment into it. Possibly, we've got a place like you described in our neighborhood, it just isn't active as frequently yet. But nobody wants to live under those kinds of conditions. We all came here for the integrity of, uh, this little town with its safe conditions and youth sports, and the beauty of, of everybody experiencing the traditions and holidays together. And, uh, I just see that not as prevalent as I've seen it in past decades. That troubles me. So it's, to me, it's a lot bigger than this issue of why we're, we're changing here. And, uh, uh, I'm still trying to get a grasp on this particular issue. We, we do need to look at it more than just at this one bad example. But, um, it has the potential to really wreck the quality of life in our town, and I don't think any of us, you know, want to sign up for that. So, um, much more to reflect on, but it's just another encroachment on the sense of community and quality of life here that we came here to enjoy. Thank you.
Okay, so in January, this will be continued through January. Staff will come back for more information. Council will talk to staff individually about different items.
We continue this to a date certain, and the staff doesn't need to notice that again, so, perhaps just, I'm not saying you will this year, sometimes you cancel that first meeting in January, so potentially to be safe, January sixteenth?
Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing. Do I need to read the whole item? Consideration impulsive action regarding approval of El Segundo's climate action plan. And staff is recommending the action to continue this item to the city council's regularly scheduled meeting of November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, to allow staff an opportunity to present the draft action pla, excuse me, draft climate action plan to the Environmental Committee for input. So I need council to approve that recommendation from staff to continue. I need a motion.
So moved.
A second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero, thank you. It is eight forty-one, we are going to take a break and be back here at ten minutes to nine. And then you said two items? Two items, yeah.
Where's that easy button? We need that easy button, Mike.
Okay. Okay, we are back. So our next item is item number four, consideration and possible action to create an ad hoc committee, the Lakes Tax Force, to evaluate the current use and future opportunity of the lakes at El Segundo Golf Course and driving range, and make recommendations to the city council, fiscal impact, and city manager.
Mayor, members of council, Mayor, you actually asked for this item under your name on the last council agenda. You asked the council at that time if we should move forward with an RFP using a task force. You asked staff to come back with some recommendations for the potential purpose, objectives, and makeup, and timeline for such a task force. So staff has prepared a couple of options. There, there are obviously more options than two, but we've prepared a couple so that you could give us some direction. So I asked Meredith Pettit, our director of Wreckin' Parks, to talk about the options that were developed and hopefully staff, or hopefully the council can give us some direction to move forward tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening, city council. As Greg mentioned at the last meeting, council had a discussion about how to proceed with getting to the ultimate goal of producing an RFP for the operations at the lakes property. We are back tonight, and we have outlined a couple of options in your staff report. The main questions really to try to get an answer to tonight, or get closer to an answer, is what is the scope of this RFP and who is to develop that scope? What we do know is that there is a grant deed restriction on the property to ensure that it remains a space for outdoor public recreation. The original intention was obviously to be used as a golf course, and golf is typically a fee-for-service type of recreation with the ability to recover all of the costs associated with its operations. And that is, as you know, atypical of most recreation and parks facilities and services. We also know that the current state of the golf course is not meeting those financial expectations, and that the facility is in need of maintenance and enhancements, and the fund simply won't support what is needed. It's evident that El Segundo is not alone in trying to figure out how to adjust golf-focused operations to the changing circumstances surrounding them. The golf industry is evolving, demographics of golfers are changing, and the way people recreate is just different today than it was 20 years ago. Furthermore, cities all over the state have experienced and continue to plan for financial challenges, and therefore have had to alter their approach to cost recovery and subsidizing certain city services. Since the last meeting, we have done a little bit of research. I've reached out to other cities through our state professional organization, California Parks and Recreation Society, to receive golf course-related RFP samples from other cities. So far, I've received samples from operations in cities in Ojai, Burlingame, an LA County course, Santa Anita, Brea, La Mesa, and South Pasadena. So these are all pretty recent examples of RFPs that have gone out. I also attended a Southern California Municipal Golf Caucus, which is a gathering of both Parks and Rec directors or managers responsible for city-owned golf facilities, as well as members of leadership agencies such as SCGA and PGA of America. It was really a facilitated discussion about the state of the golf industry, specific to municipal courses, including their history and the current challenges. Topics of discussion included the trends in shifting traditional golf facilities into community-wide amenities that include non-golfers, brainstorming ideas on how to better educate the general public and politicians on the benefits of golf, and determining a mechanism in which local agencies can better work together to view area golf facilities in a more holistic system. With that said, there are plenty of examples to draw from, and a network of professionals who are having, having open conversations about the current and future challenges and opportunities for municipal golf courses. The lakes at El Segundo is a valuable asset and has been and will continue to be a successful community amenity. I think now we are in a place to really reevaluate and redefine what success is at the lakes. So tonight, we're here to discuss kind of how do, how do we do that, and how, where do we go from here? First, we need to establish a vision for the property and determine what's important. Is it golf, or is it a broader set of recreational opportunities? Is it financial sustainability, and what does that really mean? Where does the food and beverage component fit in? And what type of experience do we want a visitor to have, and what are the residents' priorities? Staff has outlined the two task force options, both of which really could be considered starting point for the conversation tonight. Knowing that timing would be a consideration in determining the preferred method of the city council, the two options vary in size and membership, scope of the task, and estimated duration to complete. Option one in your report suggests a 15-member task force composed of various staff members selected by the city manager and representing the relevant departments such as recreation, parks, finance, planning, and/or economic development. Two city council representatives, two Wreckin' Park commissioners, an EDAC representative, a planning commissioner, and then four seats to be occupied by a mix of golf, golf industry professionals or community members at large. The model suggests that committees and commissions could decide amongst themselves who would represent their group, but that the four additional bodies would be selected by the city council through some sort of application or interview process to allow equal opportunity. This option also has a much more comprehensive set of tasks assigned, including studying data, usage on data and financial performance at the lakes, reviewing budgets and forecasts, possibly even recommending or utilizing the services of a consultant for a more professional analysis on the current operations and potential solutions. If however, the city council feels that's not necessary, option two provides a scope in which a bit more direction is given to the task force from council tonight, mostly pertaining to whether it's strictly golf operations, or if we want to open up the RFP to a broader set of opportunities, and what really are the financial performance expectations of the city council for the property. This task force would focus more on the RFP content and establishment of selection criteria with this given direction. To that end, it suggested that this task force could be comprised of representatives from the already appointed and relevant commissions and committees, including city council, Wreckin' Parks Commission, EDAC, and Planning Commission. This also allows the task force to begin fairly quickly, and they're likely educated on the matter at hand and with the city processes. Keep in mind that over the past five years, various task forces and committees have completed some of this work, including a golf course advisory committee that explored interests from other management companies and reviewed the options and differences between a traditional golf contract management style versus a lease opportunity in which the management company could produce some capital investment. There was also a vision committee that focused on the community's core values in parks and recreation, and on the existing facility's strengths and weaknesses. I think it would be prudent to revisit the findings of these previous engagement efforts to help set the stage for the new task force. Of course, I think that there is probably an option somewhere in the middle, or some hybrid option. So with that information, I would just pass it back to the city council and open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Meredith. Counselor? Comments? Thank you.
I'll just start. So this would be, what you're proposing here is a couple of options on the RFP solution. But as we had talked in the subcommittee, there's really a short-term and long-term solutions. The short-term is to really take a, because we were in dire need of some cash to start fixing the golf course. So are you going to present something separate for the short-term solution, looking at the current fees, what, how the monies, where, how, where the money's coming from today? How, you know, are we, you know, assessing the fees to the appropriate, to everybody that's playing the golf course? And so what is this? This is the long-term solution, and then there's the, the short-term solution? So I just want to understand.
That's correct. So what's in front of you tonight is geared towards the finding the long-term solution. For the short-term solution, on a day-to-day basis, I'm working with the management company right now to really dive into different policies and fees. They're currently in the process of benchmarking fees, and those types of, if there's any policy decisions to be made, we'll be going through the current structure that exists, which is the golf course subcommittee.
Okay.
I got lots of notes. I think, I think going forward from this, there's, to me, there's an issue that this is, you know, a Parks and Recs facility that we're trying to improve. I think that's a, something that everybody can agree on. And then, the path of, the path forward, I think, is where people are going to struggle a little bit. So for me, it's all about what is it that we would like to have our Parks and Rec facilities contribute to the community? How do we want them managed? What kind of things are important for those? You know, I've got some objectives, some bullet items, things I could go through and like, you know, go through it. I think one thing that's really apparent to me is that current operation isn't going to be good enough in the future. I think we have a management contract right now with a golf course management company, and that, that has certain limitations to it. And I think going forward, we're going to have to get into some kind of a, a, a more, you know, more of a lease arrangement as opposed to a, a management contract. And those, that's just a thought process I have. But in any event, the, the conditions of how we ought to have the place function, I've got a lot of stuff here that I could read off and go through if you'd like. See if you agree or disagree with it. But, you know, first of all, you know, I think the golf course manual has a really good usage description of the facility, and most of this is pulled out of that. But it's, it's something that needs to be safe for, you know, people of all ages, that we have to be able to, you know, like any other Parks and Recs facility, we got to be able to handle minors there, whether they're, you know, unattended by an adult, you know, people drop their kids off and have golf activities, people drop their kids off at the parks here and have, you know, the kids playing in the park. So there's, those are the kind of the conditions that need to be considered going forward. It needs to be clean and well-maintained. We all agree, I think we'd all agree with that. It's got to have some learning opportunities. That comes out of the golf course manual and stuff. So those learning opportunities for all ages need to be out there. It should be compliant with the current zoning requirements and, and land use restrictions out there. And I think what I hear from a lot of people, and I'm okay with this, is it needs to be self-sustaining. It shouldn't rely on any general funding for support here, any general funds for support. It needs to be affordable to, to people. And when you put all those things together, you kind of say, okay, so how, how do I get there with a, with what I've got today? And that's what I think the RFP committee is going to have to work on, is to, what do we need to do to achieve those things? And I'm sure there's more out there. Those are the ones I just kind of rattled off real quick here. But does that mean I have to do something? And, and, you know, there's a, there's three elements over there, right? There's a golf course, there's a restaurant, and there's a driving range. And for any restaurant to make any money, it has to, you know, there has to be some changes in that restaurant. It is a snack bar now, but it's operating like a restaurant, and it loses money the way it works. So we would have to make some kind of functional changes in the way that that's, how that working relationship is with the city. So I think under a, a management contract, it's not going to be able to sustain itself. I think it has to go to some other kind of agreement. But, but that's what the RFP is about, is how do we get people involved? And it's going to need some outside money to, to probably come in and do it. And, and, and I've spoke to some people from companies, and I'm not going to mention their names now, but they're interested in keeping that facility the way it is, and they're interested in injecting some capital into it to make it happen. I'll let them speak for themselves in the future. But there's, there's, to me, some fundamental things that have to happen out there. And for us to give a, you know, to form a committee and move forward with it, we have, you just mentioned like five, four, or five, or six... mentioned like five, four or five or six RFPs that you have in hand. The concept of an RFP isn't new and the content of these kind of facilities isn't a new thing for an RFP. So I struggle with, how are we, you know, why would we take a long time into developing one? Why wouldn't we start with one and then doctor it the way that we would like our facility to support the community and then get it going and make it happen? I think, you know, we ought to be able to go out and solicit bids, we ought to be able to have something put together here in a couple of months and get out the first of the year almost with a proposal. I think that's very doable and those are the, those are the kind of things that, to me are at the, you know, when I look at the item here and I look at what we want to have happen over there going forward, I'd hope that the council would add to those or subtract from those or give me your input. But that's where I stand on this, so.
So I think that was a good suggestion from Meredith to publish the previous golf committee's findings and reports as a basis to start with the new group that we formed the task force. It's good to see what thoughts have already occurred. I'd like to see a deadline on this of the last day of February, a quicker deadline than staff's proposed here. I'd like to see a smaller group because I think it can move faster, say seven folks. I'd like to see Chevron involved in this. There are significant players, as we know, in this property. And I'd like to focus on the facility, which has been neglected now for the last half-dozen years on purpose and see what we can do there with its components, the restaurant, the shop, et cetera. But get this thing moving, get the RFP out on the streets before the beginning of spring and let's start to make our golf course here in the community better and starting to make money going forward. Thank you.
I vote for option one. It's a comprehensive list, well-rounded, and that's what I think, I think we go with the staff's recommendation.
I agree with what Mike said and Dr. Brand said, and I've talked to staff that I really, I'd like a modified option two that pulls the schedule into the left. Agreeing with Dr. Brand, this doesn't need to go out into April. I've talked to a lot of golf professionals in and out of the state. And first of all, they say that there are people just itching to get their hands on a property like this and there's websites we can go look out and see. And I think, Meredith, you said you may have had some bids, but there's a website, it's government bids, and it has lots of golf course RFPs in there. And I'm told the county has a lot that we can look at, that this should be a 45-day process and not a four or five-month process. Mike, you said there was three components to the property, the driving range, the golf range and the restaurant, but actually there's a fourth, there's the lakes. It's a beautiful facility. Some of the golf people I've talked to talk about having all sorts of events there. It should be making a profit, even though our recreation and parks facilities typically do not, but there are so many golf courses that have events like concerts and parties and games and family events and campouts. And this is a beautiful piece of property and they're not inventing any more property in Southern California. So, and, you know, I mean, this might be really progressive thinking, but you know, someday there might not be a refinery there. If we're, if people truly are getting away from cars and gasoline engines and going to electricity and, I mean, even aircraft are going electric. I've been invited to a conference in Atlanta for electric aircraft. I mean, maybe someday the refinery will be gone and they'll mitigate the property and there'll be $10 million homes there and then suddenly we're not downwind of a refinery and we don't have the deed restrictions. So that's Drew Boyle's type of thinking there.
All right. Uber guys coming, everything.
Yeah, so we have so much potential there in making this a stellar recreation and parks facility. And I've heard people say that people don't think of this as a wreck and parks facility. Well, they should. It's beautiful. We're so lucky to have this. So let's develop it to the fullest potential use and maintain ownership. And I agree wholeheartedly that we should go be looking for a lease, for people to invest in improvements and then they get to benefit from the improvements that they make instead of a management company. And our management company has done a really good job on a facility that we neglected on purpose for six years, you know? I mean, thinking it was going to be bulldozed. They've kept it together with baling wire and duct tape. So that facility deserves better than that and so do the people who work there.
I do have a question, though. If we did look into a lease arrangement, wouldn't you lose the parks and recs component?
Not if that's part of the agreement.
Not if it's written into the RFP. I think there's ways of doing that. That's why.
Because, I mean, when you do a lease, then the people, if they're going to invest money into the facility, they're going to want to run it the way they want to run it and they're going to want to charge for what, how they want to charge to make up that because they're going to be for profit. So whenever you have a company that's looking for, to lease a property for profit, costs are going to go up. So I'm just concerned that if we keep talking about this, we want it to be a parks and recs facility and good for parks and recs, when you go into a lease agreement, there's no company that would go into it as a for-profit that can't get the most profits. So I just want to make sure we understand that.
I agree with that. And that was one of my comments, one of my bullet items was affordable. And there's ways of including affordability in the RFP relative to other community golf courses, if that's the decision going forward and all the other things. But the opportunity to maintain pricing consistent with LA County golf courses and everything else and consistent with driving ranges, those are things that are easily included in an RFP and you don't lose control of that. I think where you have some opportunity is the restaurant and the management of the restaurant is where I think you have the biggest chance to make a difference over there because with a managed lease on that restaurant, you go from something right now that's a drain on cash to something that generates cash. And it goes through a, someone that's maybe professional restaurateur as opposed to a golf course management company, which is more of a snack bar type of thing. So there's great opportunities there, I think. But you can maintain the affordability and have a lease. That's not, those things are not divergent.
And so I have a question for you, Meredith. In your, as you're starting to look at the short-term and looking at the current fees, how do they compare to LA County current fees on other golf courses?
They're currently collecting those figures, but what I can tell you is that we haven't raised fees since May of 2013.
So we're probably below standard.
I would say we're below. I think what's difficult is to find really what's comparable to the lakes.
There's not many nine-hole courses.
And so that's what we'll be looking at at the subcommittee, is looking at all of the quote-unquote comparable facilities, but I don't know where we stand.
So if we haven't raised rates since 2013 and a lot of the complaints that we received from the golfers in the whole Topgolf proposal was that they didn't want to lose their reasonable golf, but we are going to have to raise our price regardless, just to be comparable. And if we do bring in a company that's a lease agreement, we can be pretty sure that those prices are going to go up dramatically. So I just want to make sure we're all.
I don't think so.
They're not going to be the same as they are today.
Well, I agree. They'll be increased.
But that was the whole argument.
In the last five or six years, the county golf prices have gone up less than 10%.
But that was the whole argument against Topgolf, the whole, that initiative was because they didn't want to lose the whole parks and recs and they wanted to keep cheap golf. And so I just want to make sure we're all clear that we are looking at a, whatever we do at this juncture, the fees for the golf course are going to go up fairly, I mean, quite a bit.
They'll be market rate, you're right?
They'll be market rate, yeah. That's not, that's not a significant amount.
And the last time they were raised, I believe, and Meredith or Greg, you can correct me, I think we still consciously kept them low because it was a city facility, but we'll revisit that.
Well, we do have resident fees and non-resident fees, right? So there are differences there. So in listening, it sounds like the majority council wants us to move forward with option one or one that is an expedited version of, I'm sorry, option two. You're right. What about the makeup that's been suggested by staff? That the, there'd be some staff representatives, those obviously aren't voting members of the group, but they're assigned staff to the group. We're talking about two council members who would need to be identified pretty quickly, two wreck and park commissioners and EDAC member, which potentially could be the Chevron representative on EDAC and a planning commissioner. And in order to move quickly, we would ask that council make a decision about the council member representatives as quickly as possible. We could ask the wreck and parks commission and those three commissions that are represented to decide in their meetings this month in November, who to appoint and we can begin meeting potentially.
Well, I agree with what Dr. Brand said about a smaller committee to make, and staff shouldn't be a problem because you're here during the day for meetings. But we need people who would be available for meetings, the ones who are appointed.
So option two has, besides staff, has six members.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily know that we need two parks and wreck representative commissioners, maybe just one.
I think that's where you could probably cut is in the parks and wreck commission, just do one representative and same with city council.
Yes. I mean, I'm interested in serving, I've been with this for five and a half years now, well, actually almost eight years, but with this, and if we had two.
I'll sit on it too. I mean, I've been.
Yeah, I'm interested too, so.
No, I am. I want to pull it into the left. I mean, to shorten it up. I like what you said about, did you say February?
I said the end of February, could be the end of January, but need to meet and move it. And meetings are hard to put together in November and December in general.
Right, that's why fewer people and staff is here during the day anyways. And I also am interested in what you said about hiring somebody to help us with the RFP. So we have somebody who does this for a living, who knows how to put them together and staff or the committee isn't trying to figure it out. I would, I would vote for.
How much, when you talk about hiring someone for the RFP, is this specifically for a golf RFP or, because there's many types of RFPs, what do you, what do you mean by that?
The RFP for the lakes, yes.
For a golf, and how much would that cost?
I don't know. If I were to venture a guess, I would say $5,000 or, yes.
We obviously put together a lot of RFPs in the city and I've worked on some recreation facility RFPs. I think the key thing is to know what you're asking.
Yeah.
Right. We have to have a vision.
A lot of the RFP is, I'll say somewhat boilerplate, but, and we have documents as far as the facility and whatnot, but I think the key is what are you asking people to bid on specifically as far as the description of services? And if there's a lease, go in that, that's something we can do. I think the key is, to the extent that speed is something the council wants to achieve is getting direction on exactly what you want done, that can be translated into the services you need in the RFP. I think actually we could probably do that in-house. I'm not saying we couldn't use assistance, but it's not that complicated as long as we know what the council wants.
Well, I just don't want it to go on forever. I want somebody who can focus and knows the right things to add to an RFP. Meredith, maybe you could provide us with five or six examples that are available online, like the ones I was looking at. And I'm told the county has a page with golf course RFPs and.
Yeah, I can definitely pass those along and I think that the task force, one of the first things we would do is look at samples that we've collected.
And just historically, probably goes back 15, 20 years at this point, but the first operator or management company that worked for the city on the property, I think, was, actually, I don't want to say the name because I might mess it up, they went bankrupt. So I'll not tie a name to the bankruptcy word. But then the current group was brought in kind of on an expedited basis because it was no one to manage the golf course. City did put out an RFP 15, 20 years ago. Golf was really slumping at that point. I'm not saying it's not still slumping, but it was pretty dramatically downturn in the industry and there were not, but two or three, I'll call them proposals, and I think one of them was sort of incomplete. So it may be a very different world today, but we had gone through this process before. This wasn't very successful as far as what we received back. It was a long time ago.
So one thing that we proposed in the timeline is that the task force would check back with the city council to make sure that the RFP that they're proposing includes the components that you're looking for as a group. And we can definitely look at the dates here and try to tighten that up. I think with option two and getting these representatives identified, the makeup is used to having meetings and knows the process and so we could probably go in quicker on those meetings.
Whoever commits to it's going to have to commit to meeting either frequently or, you know, like not extending it out. So we have a timeline.
We squandered five and a half years on this facility and project. I'll say squandered because, I mean, I was involved with most of it, but it did seem like a very inefficient use of time, frankly. Now we're worried about expediting this to occur before the elections. Seems very strategic to me. I think we ought to let due course happen, see what happens with the election and get those people involved.
Again, I've been with this for five and a half years and would like to see something happen.
No, I understand that. You want closure and what I want is that I want to ensure that what we go forward with is representative of the best interest of the city. And I like to golf too. I've stated that before. I've seen some of the numbers on the residents that use the facility on a regular basis and I want to ensure that the RFP is not just a golf RFP, that we're looking at the all possible uses of that land and what's in the best interest. Maybe it's a hybrid. I don't know, but I think we ought to look at all viable options. So my concern would be that this is truly an RFP that is open-minded in the sense that we're exploring all options or is this just an RFP to get a better management contractor and kind of maintain status quo? And we have a facility that is losing a significant amount of money, despite how some of my colleagues might look at the numbers, it's losing money. And so we're not going to continue, I doubt we're going to make up $600,000 or whatever it is, the deficit on an annual basis through one of our traditional golf management. Mike, you can roll your eyes all you want. I mean, you can't get away from administrative burden, every business has it. So I want to ensure that the RFP is looking at all viable options for the facility. And if you ask most people in El Segundo what they want, people that are my age, younger, older, that have kids, that are raising kids, I doubt, and I hate to say this because one of my good friends is in the audience, I doubt they're going to say that the golf course serves the best interest of their needs. But I'll tell you what I do here, we don't have enough soccer fields. We don't have enough lacrosse fields. We don't have enough football fields. We don't have enough baseball fields. That's what I hear on a regular basis. That's all I have. Thank you.
I would think that soccer and lacrosse fields and baseball fields would take millions and millions and millions of dollars to build there if Chevron would allow it.
I'm just suggesting that we cast the net wide enough to see what we get, to see what we catch. But if we limit it to golf only, we're going to get more of the same.
I got a guy that wants to put a bowling alley in over there. So there's, I, you know, I'm not saying that we don't look at all those options. I agree, I agree with that, right? Pardon?
He's driving.
No, no. But it's, you know, a family center type of a thing that has some kind of a lease agreement with it. So I'm not opposed to looking at those things, looking at what's best for a parks and recs facility and what keeps it in with current zoning and land restrictions. So those are some of the issues that I think we need to work on. And that's where I think, you know, Don's right on target here. Chevron's got a vested interest in this and they were never involved with the other one. They got dragged through it. And, you know, I think the current use out there is in the spirit of what Chevron gave the land to the city for, and I think they want to preserve that. So, but having them as part of the committee. So, but having them as part of the committee is a very good idea, so I support that. And, and one of these days, I'm going to get Joe to clear up the economics on this thing and we'll put that in front of everybody. Because it's, it's anywhere from costing us more than our annual budget to, the city's annual budget, to breaking even, to making a buck. So I don't even know what the hell's going on.
So you're looking.
Pressure's on, Joe.
So I'm going to agree with, with Drew that I agree that we need to do the RFP and I, but I want to do it the right way. And I don't want to cram it into a timeline if, I mean, I look at what's going on in the city today. I mean, we've been trying to get an IT director hired for how many months, we still don't have anything. We, we have been trying to do, you know, get a new system for the Parks and Recs and that's taking forever. Like it, and not to, not to the fault of the city, it's just things take time. And I just think that, to, to think that we're going to have an RFP out and ready by the end of the year is pretty, pretty, you know, a tall task. So I, I'm, I, I do believe that there's something out there, but we just need to make sure we take the time and effort and do it right. And make sure that we're looking at all the interests of, of the community. And having community members on there or having people from each of the, the departments will help at least let them have a voice.
Yeah, what do you, where are we going?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm surprised that, I mean, I went with option one and noted that it has two golf industry professionals in that group and the other one doesn't. But you guys, I think you're put off by the amount of time required for that.
We can always add a golf professional to option two.
Yeah, I just don't know why.
Isn't Mike a golf professional?
No, not even close.
We can, as we are amending option two, we can add that.
The Recs and Park Commissioner, I mean, I, I heard you say eliminate one. To me, those are the most vital parts of this group outside of your staff. I, I don't know why we would cut a member there, I'd rather have a Recs and Park Commissioner and Recs and Park Department rep than not. And lose other folks, frankly, we have to. Including council members, aren't we going to hear what they have to recommend?
Yeah.
Why do we need to, anyway, I'm not just, I'm not dissecting it here, I think what you've put together is great, actually, so thank you.
But to Mark's point, I mean, to write the RFP, we need to understand what we're, what we're looking for and we need to come up with that vision. Because you can, anybody can write an RFP if you have clear direction.
I vote for option two, striking the two city council members and adding a golf pro. I, I'm, let me restate that, I move for option two, striking two city council members and adding a golf pro.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? No?
I voted yes, I was in.
No.
Boils and Purstec, no, yes, Brand, Dugan, Fuentes, no.
So we have an option two out there with the addition of a Chevron representative and.
Well, it suggests that that could be the EDAC member.
Okay, and then, pardon?
It's up to EDAC to determine.
Are they can?
So the, the, the concept was to have a Chevron representative on there, so I'm supporting that.
If we can do that and cover the EDAC seat at the same time, great, but if we can't, then we'll have both.
Right, I agree with that.
So why do the council members need to be on then? What value are we going to add? I mean, why can't we just let this group run with it and report back? I could get, I would definitely be in favor of option two with Chevron as the EDAC member or in addition to.
And the golf professional.
And the golf pro and losing the two city council members.
Okay, I could.
So you get a total of nine, Drew, that way?
One, two, three.
No, he's still.
Yeah, do you feel you need the golf?
Eight or nine, I think depending on if Chevron is.
Depending on what happens with Chevron.
What about one Parks Commissioner instead of two? What we want is a group that can meet.
Yeah.
I think some of those folks have a lot of flexibility in their schedule, I know a couple do for sure. Two and, three do. I would rather have them more than anyone else, honestly. I think they know what's in the best interest of the community as it relates to Rec and Parks.
The commissioners you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. So you're talking.
So really, because it's really only just the Rec, Parks Commissioners, the Economic Development, the, the Planning Commissioner and the Golf Pro, the, the non-employees.
Well, for staff, it's Recreation and Parks Department Representative, and it has to, I would like a decision maker and not for these positions and not just placeholders. Finance Department Representative, Planning Department Representative, Recreation and Parks Commissioners, an EDAC rep, Chevron, a Planning Commissioner and a Golf Pro.
I'm okay with that.
So that's eight.
Or nine if, right, if it's not Lily, for example.
I thought I was adding.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Whoever they, right, whoever they select for that.
Now, what happens if Chevron, if Chevron comes back and says they don't want to be on it, that's up to them to make that determination.
Yes.
Can I ask one question to you regarding the golf professional? How would you recommend going about selecting that one person?
And what the operational definition is of a golf professional?
That's not necessarily like a PGA card holding, carrying member, right? That's like somebody who may be managed, like who are you thinking there?
Well, like Southern California golf, somebody from there if they would participate.
Mike, you must have an opinion on this.
They're public meetings, so people, you know, everybody's going, everybody's going to be able to attend them and participate. So, you know, the committee here is, you know, streamlining it, I'm all in favor of that. I think you're going, you're going to get input from people that are engaged with the facility today and you're going to get people that have an interest in the facility location also, so.
How about the subcommittee, the members of the subcommittee, the current subcommittee pick that person? Because on that subcommittee you have community members as well as professionals, right?
Do you have golf professionals on that subcommittee?
Not on the committee.
We don't.
Is that the one that John Goot chairs?
No.
That committee, no?
The only, the only committee that has, we have anymore is the one that we're on and there's, there's no golf professionals on that committee.
John Goot's not in that?
He's on.
He was the president.
Is John?
Yeah, he's the representative for the El Segundo Men's Golf Club.
So, how about?
Depends on exactly how you define that professional. Is it the instruction-based, is it somebody who's in the golf industry who we can kind of pluck from, who doesn't have a specific tie to the lakes? Or is it a community representative?
Well, I actually like both, I like the idea of somebody, and I'm not, I don't know John, I can't appoint, you know, I can't speak for him. But I think somebody from that committee is as important as Parks and Rec, they're the ones who are out there golfing.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, you know, when we select the Recreation and Parks Commissioners, we have tried to, to, to cover as many sports as we can. In a town that used to have like five representatives from baseball and softball, I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to cover aquatics and other sports. So we don't have a golfer on the Recreation and Parks Committee. So maybe having somebody from that committee who's been on it for years and is invested in golf, plays the sport, makes sense.
Well, what do you define as a golfer? We have a couple golfers on that committee, but.
What do you define as a golfer?
I mean, I consider myself a golfer, Josh might disagree, but I get up there a few times a year. I mean, I think we just, I think Mike's saying it doesn't matter anyway, they're going to be there. Is that, Mike, is that your point? They're going to be at the meetings anyway because they have so much vested interest.
So, you know, what, what are we doing here? We're jerking this thing around like crazy. We can't just sit down and say, let's put a team together and put up an RFP that's going to take the place forward and make it better. You know, something that's more responsive to the community, I mean, that's what we're trying to do here. And we're, we're nitpicking every little thing for the sake of political.
I don't think we're nitpicking.
Well, I think we are, I think we are, because we're positioning ourselves here for pre-election, post-election, there's all kinds of, you know, innuendo going on here.
Nope.
Yeah.
I think we're pretty clear about it, I don't think there's anything subdued at all.
Yeah, so.
It's not a covert operation.
So there's criteria that you want to have in a Parks and Recs facility and, and as a council, I think that, that, those criteria are important to this facility going forward. If that, that's the, you know, if we're going to back out of this, I think that's the kind of direction that the council ought to give to this committee, is what is it that you want? You know, there, people are going to be looking for direction, what do you want out of this place? If you're looking for more revenues and stuff, I think that's going to open up some opportunities for, you know, there's going to be, you know, if you, if you saw any of the, you know, Jim Cramer from the, you know, Mad, Mad Money and all the, you know, crazy investment guys, right? He was talking today about some company that was doing some restaurant work, that was doing carryout food. And they say, nobody can make money in the restaurant business without a liquor license. That's not over there right now, so I mean, there's some issues that are going to have to come out of, what is this thing going to look like going forward? Are we going to be a, you know, i- if there's going to be a, a revenue issue that's going to be important out there? There's going to have to be some criteria that are going to have to change from what they are today. And we have to provide that kind of guidance and leadership to it. And, and we're talking all around it, let's just put, you know, five or six people together, 10 people in a room and let them go act and, and come back with things. And there's more questions than there are answers. So again, I, I struggle with what direction are we going to give this committee? Who the committee is, I'm okay with backing away from it, but we have to give them some direction going forward.
So I'll move option two with the composition of one, members one, two and three, which is Recs and Park, Finance, Planning. Rec and Park Commissioners, one and two, Economic Development Council Member and/or Chevron Rep, Planning Commissioner and a Golf Pro to be determined by the Golf Course Subcommittee, Carol and Mike. So that I move.
I would like to amend it to take off a Rec and Parks Commissioner and put a Golf Committee Member, because it is a golf course.
He's putting on a Golf Committee Member.
I put one on.
No, I thought you said Golf Pro, no?
No, you said Golf Committee Member.
Well, I said Golf Pro as, you know, selected by that committee. But I want to keep the, I'd like to keep the two Recs and Park Commissioners on there, I think that's important.
Did any city council members make your list this time?
No.
No.
I thought you said that, okay.
So bring it to the Golf Committee and let them select who they want to be on the, on the committee. I mean, they, they've been, they've been investing their time in, into this for, for years and years and years, they meet.
They play golf.
Well, so that committee doesn't meet until December, I don't think. So here we are, going to wait till December.
No, you can call a meeting, we'll prevent you from calling a meeting next week.
Yeah. I mean, but that committee's been together for a long time.
Would you like to take more time? Is that what I'm hearing you say or what?
No, I'm just saying that, but that committee's been meeting for a long time, it would be, we should be going to them. I mean, they've been part of this for a long time, they would probably have a good, a lot of insight.
So Mike, do you think they, they should participate?
Not, not that committee of the members?
That's a Mike question.
So the answer is yes, I mean, they're the ones that are probably the, the ones that have been left out of this all along, right?
I agree.
Yes.
And, and they're the ones that should be providing some oversight for the, the operation at that facility there.
So that's why we're trying to add one of them.
So what about instead of terminate a golf professional, a golf representative or a member of the golf subcommittee?
Yes, and how about?
There's two community members on the subcommittee.
And how about that committee decides if they want a golf professional in it?
Yes, no?
You know, I don't have a problem with putting people over there that are going to represent what we want in a Parks and Recs facility. That's the issue I have, whoever those are, if it's, if it's off the Parks and Rec Commission, if it's going to be, you know, somebody, somebody from the committee is good. Somebody, you know, a golf professional, I think those are all good people to have on that committee, somebody from the, you know, from the industry.
So did I hear you say one, two, three?
Six, seven, eight, nine and a golf course subcommittee.
And a Chevron representative.
Yeah, well, I assume, yeah, yes.
Those could be two different people.
They could be two different people, EDAC and Chevron or EDAC, yeah, as the Chevron person.
Okay.
And are we going to have a timeframe associated with this or?
I hope so.
Time, timeframe's in there, it's under April 17th, 2018.
I know, but I want to, I want to pull it into the left and I think I heard two other votes for pulling it to the left.
Should we vote on the first one then, the composition?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I move that we go with option two, slightly amended. We will have a Rec and Park Department Representative, Finance Department Representative, Planning Department Representative, two Rec and Park Commissioners, the EDAC, an EDAC member, which could be the Chevron person, if not, we'd have an additional Chevron representative, a Planning Commissioner and a Golf Course Subcommittee Delegate, for lack of a better word.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, one.
What was the vote?
With Dugan, no. Okay, now the schedule. Current schedule now begins December 1st and ends April 17th.
Well, maybe they could start early, late November, at least have a first meeting to start talking about vision. Because that's going to take, that's going to take a couple of meetings to talk about what they want. And then before they, do you want the, do you want the subcommittee to present back to the council before, with the direction of their, going on their vision? Before the RFP is written, or do you want them to move forward the RFP before this council understands what the vision is?
What direction are they headed? They have no direction right now, right?
They got a starting point, I think what you read from the golf manual, I took notes, is.
Sustainability?
Yeah, I mean, I heard you say it needs to be self-sustaining financially, compliant with land usage, provide learning opportunities, clean and well-maintained, well-maintained, safe for all ages. I mean, that's a great starting point, I think, affordability you had in there.
And a Recreation and Parks Facility.
Recreation Park Facility, right. I think you wanted to add a liquor license too, we could debate that.
That goes wrong.
Just, I'm being honest, do we want to include that or not, is, you know, possible?
Well, don't they already have a liquor license?
No.
Beer and wine.
A beer and wine.
So what are, what are the objectives for the operation of this Parks and Recs facility? Is it to generate revenue, is it to break even, is it to do what?
Well, I think it's to break, break even as, as well as put money aside for future improvements, so that there can be an enterprise fund.
I mean, I read, self-sustaining to me means cash flow neutral. That's the way I interpret that.
So the question was, can we, do we need that step of coming back in to check in with council or not? It sounds like probably a good idea to check back in with council as to what the group comes up.
Yes, in case there's any course correction or?
And as like, as, as quickly as we'd like to move this, there's, there's probably only a, a two, three weeks leeway in this schedule from a practical standpoint. You could cut the task force's time that they're working on this down from eight weeks to six or four. Uh, but the other steps are, are pretty tight as far as, I think, in looking at other RFPs, they typically give about 45 days, right?
Yeah, and we had that issue with the Parks and Recs software, we didn't give them enough time. And we need to give people at least three weeks to respond, right?
So I think potentially you move the selection from April to March and, and you give the task force less time to develop their recommendations.
Did you say, did you say three weeks?
At the minimum, at the minimum, because the last time we built in six weeks.
We're talking about complex financial transactions here.
Yeah, no, I've been hearing 45 days for.
Yeah, at least, I mean, this isn't like selling a software package where you've done it time and time and again. This is like not a cookie cutter situation whatsoever, unless you're managing a golf course and you have the same product that's there with some nuances.
Yeah, I think the only... I mean, to come back to city council, where we could pick up the time would be to come back the second meeting of January. It's really the only option, looking at it.
Have a special meeting.
Dates for a special meeting.
First and third Tuesday.
Between the end... Between mid-January and beginning of February.
Could be pulled in.
Well, let's see what they come up with. You know, let's get it started.
Okay. And then, when's the next Recreation and Parks Commissioner meeting?
We have a meeting next Wednesday.
Will you add it then to the agenda? Thank you. And then...
Do you have to convene a meeting of the Golf Course Subcommittee? Are we gonna put a member on it, right?
Yes, I can make myself available. And EDAC? When's next EDAC? Next Wednesday?
Usually the same day.
Greg, when's the next EDAC meeting? Is it next Wednesday also?
I believe so. We can... We'll, you know, if necessary, we can do special agendas, right? The Planning Commission meets this Thursday. I assume we could put a special agenda out to add this item tomorrow. So, we can develop the membership this month, November. And I think we can begin meeting and get information out this month, but begin meeting in December.
I think it is the EDAC is on the same day as the mixer.
But that's the Metalmix, yeah.
I think it is on the same day.
Oh, it is.
So, it's the 15th.
So, they might not be able to make it till the next meeting, or they could send a representative.
I do believe EDAC says 15th.
Okay, so, we've talked timeline, but it sounds like we're gonna wait for the committee to have a first meeting and... Okay. Are we good, City Attorney?
More of a policy thing, so whatever majority of you want to do.
Are we good, Mike?
We'll see what comes out. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Let's see. Consent agenda, any polls?
Oh, number seven.
Anything else?
Move approval of five, six, and eight.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I didn't hear it. Was that an a, Carol? Yes, an a.
Okay, five, zero, thank you. Councilmember Pristock, item seven.
Consideration impossible action to award a standard public works contract to know-how constructors... Constructors... Instructors, sorry. I'm very tired. In a form approved by the City Attorney for construction of the Recreation Park Picnic Shelter, project number PW16-15. Fiscal impact $65,260. Plus $30,000 from L.A. County Regional Park and Open Space District grant. I pulled this because I just wanted to... I know we had a lot of dialogue about this. And I know one of the recommendations we had was for the staff to go back to the Parks and Recs Commission to vet this project. And I just wanted to make sure... Get an update from Parks and Recs to find out what that recommendation was from the Parks and Recs Committee. I believe it was a yes-go-forward, but I just wanted to hear it from Meredith.
Correct. You know, they did discuss it and were happy about the project. They do think it's a high priority and a need. They have visited the current picnic shelter and have seen firsthand the disrepair that it's in, so they think it's a very big improvement and a needed improvement. And they also are working on a secondary project, which is prioritizing and coming up with a ranking criteria to prioritize our long list of needed projects.
Thank you, Meredith. So, I move to approve number seven.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, thank you. New business, item nine. Consideration impossible action to introduce an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code to regulate the operation of drones from within public parks and from the public right-of-ways and other public property. Fiscal impact none. City Manager?
Our City Attorney's gonna present this... Prepare this item, and we'll present this item.
Hope he doesn't drone on.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I hope you don't drone on about this." It's getting late, you know?
I'll make this really short. Counsel had wanted to understand what the city's ability was to regulate drones. I'm not gonna go through the entire staff report, which has a lot of information in it about drones and drone ownership and how they're regulated by the FAA. But what it comes down to is really a couple of issues for El Segundo, well, for most cities, is that this area is preempted by federal law. The only thing the city has the ability to regulate is the parks or city-owned property and right-of-ways, and that we can prevent people from taking or having drones take off or land on public property. But otherwise, the city has no ability to regulate drones. That is the limit of our authority. The rest of it's covered by state law and federal law. The... Lost my train of thought there, I'm sorry. The other issue with regard to El Segundo is the entire city's within five miles of the airport. And so, that really curtails the use of drones in the city. Other than some specialized exemptions, anyone that wants to file a drone, the city really has to get approval from the FAA at the local airport. And I expect that's not easy to do. I'm not actually inquired into the process, but...
It's just a notification.
What's that?
It's just a notification.
Well, they can object, and there's issues surrounding that, but it makes El Segundo a more difficult place to operate a drone. Though I'm not a drone owner, so I can't really speak to it. I haven't had any discussions with them. And what's in front of you tonight is simply an ordinance to prevent or prohibit individuals from having or operating drones so they take off or land on public property. Happy to answer any questions you have. There's a lot of background information in the staff report.
Question on the public property. Would this govern school sites?
Uh, no.
That's their own business, huh?
That's their own business.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is just takeoff and landing on public? So, people can still fly over public land?
Yes. Any other questions?
My only concern I shared with the City Manager is it goes up to 55 pounds. That's a lot. Force equals mass times acceleration. And something suddenly becomes not airworthy, that could do a lot of damage, so...
Yeah.
There's some big drones out there. I know. The state does, you know, it's in the staff report. The staff... Or the state does, by criminal law, regulate trespass and whatnot, which I think is a lot of issue... Or an issue that a lot of people have with them. We... I didn't really address it. I probably should just briefly, that people do have privacy rights, and it's not lawful to use a drone to invade somebody's privacy space in their backyard, as far as recording conversations or videotaping things. So, that is prohibited by law.
And what have our local... What are the local cities doing as far as drones?
They can't do any more than what we're proposing here. In fact, the FAA recommended that we run any ordinance past them, which we did. And this is really what we're limited to. And the governor has turned away dozens of bills trying to regulate drones in the state. His position that there's enough regulation over drones already, and so he's vetoed a lot of bills from the legislature.
I'll move approval.
I'll read the ordinance. This'll be a...
Oh, sorry.
Introduction, and then we brought back for a second reading and potential adoption at your next council meeting. An ordinance adding Chapter Nine to Title Nine of the El Segundo Municipal Code and amending Section 10-1-4 of the Municipal Code to regulate the operation of unmanned aircraft, including drones in public parks and on public property throughout the city. Is ready for introduction.
So, are you introducing?
I'd like to introduce it.
This will be brought back at the next council meeting on November 21st for potential adoption.
Thank you. Item number 10, consideration impossible action to adopt a resolution authorizing participation in the PARs Post-Employment Benefits Trust Program to be administered by Public Agency Retirement Systems, PARs, and U.S. Bank, appointing the City Manager as the city's plan administrator and authorizing the City Manager to execute the documents to implement the program. Fiscal impact none. City Manager?
Mayor, Members of the Council, this item... This concept has been before you a number of times, and that's establishing a specific account to deposit funds in that earn, based on less controlled investment requirements that typically earn a higher rate of return than what the city earns on its investments. And those funds would be limited to use for pension obligations. It does require the council to pass a resolution, and Joe Lilio may want to add to that.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers. So, this item was before you... I'm sorry. The presentation of this item was before you on August 31st. Dennis Yu, the Senior Vice President from PARs, presented and touched on this. Just real quick, some of the quick benefits. Greg did touch on them, but we have investment flexibility with this. Increased risk diversification. Oversight and control of the fund by the city. Increased flexibility on use of trust assets, so the city can withdraw from the fund at any time to pay for pension costs. And then, lower investment and management expenses compared to CalPERS. So, if you do approve this item tonight, there is no funding that we're asking for approval. The anticipation is we'll come back during mid-year, reevaluate our financial position, and recommend any funding at that point. I'll also be working with the City Treasurer to develop some policies around funding and withdrawal from this fund, if it is approved. That's all I have as comments. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
So, this just sets up the vehicle or the shell, and then we can fund it when we want to?
Correct.
Okay.
Have a motion to...
I'll move.
I'll move.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero. Thank you, Joe. Item 11, consideration impossible action to receive and file an informational report regarding Mayor Protem Boils and the City's Director of Finance attending the CalPERS workshop and board meeting on November 14th and 15th. Fiscal impact none.
We'll have Joe Lilio present this item as well.
Yeah, actually, that's a good point. There is a fiscal impact. It's negligible, I guess. It's a...
Hotel and airfare?
No hotel required. It's a one-day trip, but airfare there and back, right?
Yes, that is correct. So, for instance, my total travel costs are, I think it's about $500. So, a quick overview. The CalPERS Board is having a meeting November 13th through the 15th in Sacramento. The California... The League of California Cities is recommending that city officials attend the CalPERS Board meeting next week to testify before the CalPERS Board. There is a pre-meeting beginning at 11:30 a.m. on November 13th, and that will be held at the League of California Cities Headquarters. And there'll be a debriefing between 11:30 and 1:00 for city officials. Immediately after that, the CalPERS Board Workshop will begin around 2:30 and probably lasts until about 5:00 or maybe even 6:00. And city officials will have three minutes to speak before the CalPERS Board. And there is anticipation that there'll be a heavy turnout from cities. Tuesday is a continuation of the CalPERS Board Workshop, where city officials can provide public testimony as well. So, I'm also planning on being there Tuesday to participate in that discussion. So, real quick, some of the items that they're gonna be discussing. Economic assumptions. One, we have the price inflation assumption. Currently, that's at 2.75% annually. It's been unchanged since 2012. CalPERS Actuary Office is recommending a 0.25% decrease to 2.5%. So, this would actually have a positive financial outlook upon the city by reducing future pension costs by this reduction. And that's really just tied to inflation. So, inflation has been below that 2.75% mark. Wage inflation, that's currently at a quarter percent annually. CalPERS Actuary Office is recommending leaving that unchanged. Payroll growth assumptions. So, payroll growth assumption is used as the payment escalation rate when amortizing the unfunded liability portion of open plans. Currently, the assumption used by the CalPERS Board is 3%. And the CalPERS Actuary Office is recommending that the annual payroll growth assumption be reduced by a quarter percent to 2.75%. And then, again, this will have a positive financial impact on cities by reducing the future pension cost. That's because, excuse me, payroll growth assumptions have been below that 2 point... I'm sorry, that 3% mark for several years now. Discount rate assumption, this is the elephant in the room, so to speak. So, this is the primary economic assumption, is the development of the discount rate assumption. Right now, CalPERS Board has a 7% discount rate, and that was brought before the CalPERS Board, December 2016, where they voted to bring it from 7.5% down to 7%, phased in over three years. The first year that that became implemented was July 1st, 2017. And the last year will be July 1st, 2019. So, the CalPERS Board left open the possibility that the process of setting actuary assumptions could change. So, they are looking at a wide range of possibilities. And what they're looking at is four asset allocations, ranging in anywhere from a 6.5% to a 7.5% discount rate result. So, depending on which of these four proposed asset allocations the board adopts, it could go down as low as 6.5%, which would have huge financial impacts on cities. Could maintain it at the 7%, or they could increase it to 7.5%, and that would have a reduction in costs to cities. The Actuary Office is recommending leaving it at the 7%. I'm hearing that there is some pressure on the board to reduce that further. At the 7% assumption, it's about an 80% equities, 20% fixed income and cash. And the board wants to reduce some of that exposure to equities, bringing it down to about 65% or 70% equities, the remainder in fixed income and cash. And that would bring us to that 6.5% discount rate. So, again, it's...
So, if they did that, then that means that within... In less than one year, less than 12 months, they would've changed that twice, from 7.5% down to 6.5%.
If they decide to go that route.
If they did that, yeah.
When that will be implemented and phased in, I'm sure it'll probably be, you know, in the latter years.
Push it later.
Right.
Wow.
And again, just to, you know, stress that the Actuary Office is recommending sticking with the 7%. Just real quick, here's one of the methodologies that's used. So, anytime there's an actuarial loss or gain in a particular year, that's amortized over a 30-year period. And you have the first five years, what's called a ramp-up period. This results in negative amortization, so the cities are not even paying... This results in negative amortization, so the cities are not even paying, you know, the full interest that's accrued on these losses. Years, again, that's years one through five, you have negative amortization occurring due to a loss. Year six through ten, the payments address the accumulated interest that resulted from years one through five on the negative amortization. Finally, in year eleven, cities' payments start being applied towards the principal. So what they're looking at doing is changing it to a twenty-year amortization on actuarial losses. And what that does is eliminates the negative amortization. And I'll get to a subsequent slide here what that does. So if you look at the left of the screen on that first line chart, the red line is a current example, if a city had a one million dollar loss due to an investment loss, that red line is thirty-year amortization. The blue line, looking at that same chart, is the proposed twenty-year amortization policy that they're looking at going to. And you can see there's quite a large savings to cities by doing that. And if you look at the chart on the right, you have the first five years ramped up, and then years six through twenty, it's all even payments versus, and that's the blue lines. The red lines on the right chart is the thirty-year amortization, where it's ramping up first five years, and then years six through thirty, I'm sorry, six through twenty-five, it increases every year. Year twenty-five through thirty, it decreases. And what this results in, put it into numbers, current policy with the thirty-year amortization, the five-year ramp-up and the five-year ramp-down would result, and again, if you have a million dollar loss, would result in two point seven million dollars in payments from a city over that thirty-year period. The proposed methodology going to a twenty-year amortization period of losses would result in a two million dollar payment on a one million dollar loss. That save, that would save a city seven hundred thousand dollars, pretty significant. And then there's an example there in the initial payments, so from a budgetary perspective, there's really not much of a, it's not material. Again, the current year, your first year would be thirteen thousand, two fifty-seven. Your out year would be seventy-four, six oh six, and you can see in the bottom there, going to the twenty-year proposal, your first year would be twenty-one thousand dollars, your initial payment's only eight thousand dollars more. Then your, your payment five through twenty would be a hundred and nine thousand, again saving the city seven hundred thousand. This is another example of going, getting rid of the five-year ramp-up, so just doing twenty-year amortization with even payments. You can see on the far right there, the blue lines that represents even payments, years one through twenty. And what that results in here, again, using those same numbers, thirty-year, you would pay two point seven million dollars, and without the five-year ramp-up going to the twenty-year period, the city would pay one point eight million, so nine hundred thousand in savings, pretty significant. If this methodology was in place, you know, over the last twenty years, cities would be saving millions of dollars. So this is some of the examples of the methodology changes that they're going to be discussing Monday and Tuesday, that cities really need to participate in, and they haven't in the past, so I think cities do need to have a voice in this. That's it. So any questions?
Thank you.
And that one chart, the graphs there, can you go back to one of those, any one of those? Yeah. The, the graph on the left, that is annual payments, what am I looking at there? That's just...
That's the balance of that million-dollar loss.
Okay.
And you can see it, negative amortization, it's going above million, one million dollars, actually, almost approaches one point two million at one point.
Well, thank you, Joe. And Drew, Joe, thank you for going up there, and I really want to thank Dr. Brand and Mayor Protem Boils and Joe for your leadership on this. I know you've had subcommittees, and you've been meeting with most of the bargaining units who will attend to talk about CalPERS and the unfunded pension liabilities, so I really appreciate you taking the day out of your life to go up there and represent, and thank you very much, Joe.
Boy, and I was going to make a motion that we take the council member off the list there.
No.
Touche, touche.
We want the council member on the list.
I'm kidding, Drew.
Thank you. Okay, reports. City manager.
Do we have to approve that?
Nope, it's a receiving file.
I was just noting that we were talking about drones and marijuana and Airbnb, and those are issues that I never thought we'd be dealing with and didn't really exist more than a few years ago, so makes you wonder what's next.
Was that your post? City attorney?
Just briefly, the council, I think it was back at the first meeting in October, the Park Vista chairperson came forward and discussed the issues they were having with construction and prevailing wage, and had several options. Direction was, in the short term, to come back to council and, within several meetings or so, and give a preliminary report to the council about whether these options were viable. Plan currently is to, I think we'll be back to the beginning of December, and also probably will provide some preliminary thoughts. A lot of this is legal in nature, although if it moves forward, there'll be some necessary financial analysis of some of the options that were presented, but at that point, too, I think there'll be some decision for the council to make on a couple of the construction projects, at least one at Park Vista, the plumbing project, so that'll be coming forward to first meeting in December.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing missing, thank you.
Do you feel left out because you didn't have an election today? Our city treasurer is not here this evening. Councilmember Brand, you have an item under your name?
All right. Let's just, turn it on here. When we all wake up in the morning, we're going to be operating twice as many high schools in the city of El Segundo that we have in the past, as Wisburn High School opens with its three Da Vinci High Schools. We already have Arena High School, El Segundo High School, and Vistamar High School, all great schools. We're very blessed to have half a dozen now high-performing schools right here in, in our little city, so it's, it's a great day tomorrow. I hope you saw the article in Today's Breeze about it all, it was well done, and by Megan Barnes. And December ninth, there'll be the official community opening and ribbon cutting, about a month after, after they get going. They've been moving a lot of boxes the last few days. The item under my name is one I thought we already processed back in August, and that was when I brought it forward to address the staffing of the members of the Arts and Cultural Committee. We got a four-zero vote that evening, I think it was one absent, and I thought we'd fixed it all, but then as staff went to implement it, it wasn't clear to them what it really meant, and so I've asked it to come back on the agenda tonight to clarify what the process is. The committee's been struggling. It started off with, I think, five or seven members, and then eventually, at this action we took in August, increased the membership to eleven. But as we've increased the number of seats, the number of participants has been shrinking. We, we lost Jay Heschler because he was appointed to the Planning Commission, and the city didn't want him serving on both, even though he wanted to. We lost one of the members that the council appointed because he never was able to attend any meetings. We're going to lose another member soon, by the end of the year, so next month at the latest. So basically, have gone down to four of the eleven spots, and we've had to cancel the last three meetings. Had a special one that worked last week, but we, we're just struggling to get the group together, and yet there are some excellent people who've applied to serve, been interviewed, and will really enhance the quality of the committee. So I want to bring this back here tonight, the same way I did in August, and say that the committee would like to interview the additional members and then make recommendations to the council here, and the council could either accept those recommendations, or they could decide that they'd also like to interview. There's just been a lot of bureaucracy in the way of getting this committee up and running, and it's going to be a fantastic committee with great people on it, but we have all these ideas and we want to get going. So I need your help tonight to define the selection process, and I'm urging that it be done in a way like I did before that would streamline it some and get this committee up and running. So that's all this is about. I thought we already took care of this, but we need a little more help on it, so. The description is well done here in the item, especially the first paragraph under background and discussion. The committees started to do interviews, and different committees do this differently. We usually get a recommendation from the committee members of who they think the council should appoint, and then we take that into consideration and we do the interviewing. But we've added, what, two new committees since we all been together here, and we've done so much interviewing to staff those committees, and, and we still, still are going, right? It's hard, hard to finish it. So I just want help clarifying, are you going to be okay with the, the really effective people on the committee doing these interviews and then coming to you and say, we would like to add these three members or something? We're not going to fill members just to fill seats, we want to get people who really want to and can serve. So I bring this back up. Staff knows what to do.
I, I agree with most of it. The one caveat, Dr. Brand, would be, I know you said we have the option to interview. I think interviewing is important for, if nothing else, to almost as part of an onboarding process where we get to know the candidates, because in some cases, we won't even know who they are. There have been people that have come before us interviewing for different committees, commissions, and boards, maybe they're new to town and we didn't know them. So I would like the, to retain the ability to interview people. And in most cases, we have taken the recommendations of the chair, the vice chair, I think we started this process back when I was on EDAC, we kind of asked for forgiveness, not permission, and we started just recommending who we wanted to be on our council, to the city council, then they still conducted the interviews, and in, I think, most cases, they appointed who we, you know, asked for. I don't see it really changing that much from that process. I think you're just saying that, I would like to ask that we retain the ability, I think we can do a better job of batching interviews and interviewing people, and maybe saying to candidates, we don't have a spot now, but we might have a spot, and in three months, we have an ability to place somebody.
Correct.
I don't think we're doing much in the way of becoming more efficient in interviewing peoples, and we've also rescheduled on people and delayed things when, when items have come up.
I mean, is it possible for us to, like, have a scheduled interviews, like, scheduled interviews every once a month, like, the first meeting of the month for the first fifteen minutes, we'll conduct interviews, and if there's anyone that's applying, or there's open times seating at, open spots, we interview them? So it's kind of like a set process that we implement? Because then, you know, then we, because there's always openings coming up, and, you know, there's a lot, we're always accepting invitations, and so at least if we interview them, we have them on record, and then as seats open, we can say, hey, we interviewed this person.
Well, we formed this committee in August of two thousand sixteen. It's November of two thousand seventeen, and the committee is...
Still struggling.
Going to four members. Something needs to be done here, because the people on the committee have a lot of wonderful ideas and want to, to get going, and nobody's saying here that the council can't interview. You really need to interview the, the next two recommendations are George Renfro III, who ran the art walk here this past summer, and Jeff Kason. We'll need to explain what he can do. Those people will strengthen the committee. We know who they are. I just think we need to move these people through the committee so they can start to form a quorum and have a meeting.
Because it's a year old, and we have eleven on the committee, is that's the number?
Eleven slots, and we've got four of them filled.
Yeah, so maybe that's part of the issue right there, is that we have too many on the committee, maybe you ought to have a smaller...
Too large a committee, you mean?
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. You have too many, too many seats for the committee. You can have all kinds of people advising on the committee and participating with it, but you can't have a quorum if you don't have, you know...
Well, we couldn't have a quorum when we, you know, had seven members on there. We missed three meetings. I just want to do something here that'll make this work. Got a couple people here, the chair of the committee's here, assistant to the vice chair, et cetera, is here. They, they are trying to make this, this work and, and streamline this bureaucracy. Everything here in the city makes me crazy and how slow it moves, you know that. This is just another example of it that's kind of...
You're coming out of the public sector, come out of the private sector and see that, right?
Yeah. I see it coming out of the public sector.
So you said we have the makings of a fantastic committee...
Right.
With great people, and I think we already have a fantastic committee with great people.
There just aren't enough of them to make a quorum.
Well, I would still like council to meet everybody and interview them. I, I haven't been a fan of, you know, of having the chairs or the committees review the resumes or applications and make recommendations to us. I feel like some of them are kind of being front-loaded with friends and not necessarily the people that we need. I think it's up to us to make the decisions, as you said earlier, Mayor Protem, it's hard decisions, and I know in some case we want to expand, I'm not talking Arts and Culture, some of the committees, because it's so hard, there's so many good people, but that's what we were elected to do, is to make those decisions. So I certainly appreciate the two people that you mentioned, and maybe we could even have a phone interview with them. I mean, those are two people that we would love to have on, I'll speak for myself, I would love to have on the, the committee. But I, I still want it to be our responsibility and, and our appointments, because that's what we were elected to do.
You'd be making the appointments, they'd just be making the recommendations to the council here, and you could interview or not.
I just feel like it's abdication of my responsibility to do that.
But if we had, like, a set time for fifteen minutes every once, once a month, it's always the first Tuesday, first council meeting of the month, we set a time for interviews and have it slotted and scheduled.
Well, I think that's interesting, but, you know, fifteen minutes is only going to do one person, but I think if there was...
One hour. Whatever the time...
At least an hour, and it was ongoing.
Yeah, and ongoing, and if we didn't have, we didn't have anybody, yeah. We didn't have anybody, we, we don't have to do it, but if we happen to have people, they could be slotted in, and we could at least be constantly interviewing people.
Or even a separate day for interviews, or a weekend.
So for the two candidates that have been proposed, have we, are those interviews set? Those dates set?
No, because it's been unclear that they were needed.
One sort of stopgap measure I guess we could do is have you interview those two people at your next meeting, but also schedule their appointment for that night, just as a one-time stopgap to move that along, and then schedule the, we had four other applicants as well, right? So we have four other applicants for that, that committee, and there are, so of the six, there are seven vacant seats, right?
I think that's a great, you know, one of the things that slowed down now is we don't announce the night of the interviews.
Right.
Which we used to for, since the beginning of time here, but now we wait an additional two weeks at a minimum, depending on how the month falls.
But we call the people that didn't get the nod, right, which is kind of nice, as opposed to a form letter, so it's got its pros to it.
I don't know, you know, I wasn't selected the first time I applied for a committee, and I found out that night by listening, well, actually, I was here waiting for the announcements, which is fine, and I applied again, so I, it's kind of like the trophy generation thing now. You have to wait a couple weeks so we can reach out to you, so...
Well, we're sixteen months in, and we don't have it together with this committee. That's what I want to share with you tonight, and looking for some way to make this work.
I, I appreciate that. I still would like to do the interview... I still would like to do the interviewing, but I like what you suggested about doing the interview next, the next meeting and announcing at least those two that night. So...
No whistles or stripes or anything, right? This is, this is not referees, this is arts, right? I, you know, I just think the 11 is too big of a committee, you can't hold it, you know? So break it down to five and that way you can have a quorum easier and you can meet and you can continue. You know, you got great plans and I don't think you have enough, enough support to make it happen, so...
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we're going to have six and the potential of 10 after the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, if we were agendized, well, we couldn't do it tonight, but...
It's on the agenda, so...
Dr. Brand, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing much support for your item.
All right, let's move on. I'm done with my floor.
Okay. Councilmember Purstuck.
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Mayor Protam.
I'll be quick. I had a brief meeting with California State Senator Ben Allen today. It was good. It was impromptu, informal, but I had an opportunity to talk to him about a couple things, pensions that Dr. Brand and I have been working on and getting his perspective from a state level on where he stands on that. And some other issues of, you know, facing our town, including the LA County property tax allocation, something that Marie Falhauer and others were championing in the past. So he's had conversation, he's open to revising the dialogue and have already reached out to some people here as well, see where that goes. I want to give kudos to the Parks and Rec Department in Kiwanis for a great Halloween frolic. Kiwanis always does the costume judging. They did a great job. And then I have good news. I know Ava, who's the chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, already knows, but the, we finally got through to, she's not the chair, vice chair, who's the chair? Sally, I'm sorry, Sally, I had it reversed, sorry. Well, then, I don't know why I didn't talk to you today, but anyway, or forward you that email, I apologize, Sally, but you know already, I'm sure, that the DWP tank that's the eyesore on Grand Avenue, even though we had a verbal commitment from DWP when Greg and I met with them downtown, we finally got in writing that they're allowing us to do something. It's not as, doesn't give us as much creative liberty as we would have hoped for, but they're going to allow us to do a wrap installation and I think even give us some financial proceeds to help with that. And they responded with a whole litany of requirements, but it's good news, it's progress. So I think the ball's in their court, Dr. Brand and Carol with your committee and moving that thing forward. I know you guys already have some great ideas, so that's, that's cool.
Only if they can get a quorum. So when you saw...
What, yeah. Oh, wait, can I, real quick, Susan Hall, I want to give props, Jimmy DeSisto, local business owner and resident. This was his, he kept bugging Dragon Eye to no end, so I want to give Jimmy props because this DWP thing and what it's becoming is, I think, a result of his pestering us to do something about this for quite some time. Thank you, Jimmy. That's all I had.
When you saw State Senator Allen today, was that at the Redondo Beach Library, the event he had there, or was that something else?
It was just after that, it was lunch. So he had reached out and said he was available after that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have, let's see, I have several things. First of all, the Halloween frolic, big fun. I went to the chamber and passed out candy with Lynda Johnson, Thousand Pieces. What a well-attended event, Meredith, to you and your staff. So much fun, so many darling kids there and their parents. And I will be with Dr. Brand tomorrow and the city manager and I think the chiefs for the first official day at Wiseburn High School. I don't know if any of my colleagues are coming, that's great. But we're excited that they're coming and we welcome them and we know that they'll do great things for us in El Segundo. Tomorrow, I'm going to go volunteer at the LAX Aviation Career Day. On Sunday, I went to the Shake Shack grand opening, which was well-attended with hundreds of people lined up to go in. It was, it was very nice. I was there with the chamber and also Bob from Continental Development, so we are grateful that they chose El Segundo and we're grateful to Continental Development for bringing them to El Segundo. Let's see, I attended a meeting of the South Bay Aerospace Industry Alliance and South Bay Cog. Last night, I was very honored to be invited to General John Thompson's home at Fort MacArthur to have dinner with him and a few other mayors in the region. I've never been invited there for something like that and it was, it was really wonderful. And part of it was, he wanted to extend his gratitude to El Segundo for our participation in the base and the support that we give them and, of course, the schools, our school district and other school districts, but it was, it was lovely. And a couple things, today was the El Segundo Chamber Salute to the Military. It was really a wonderful day. Councilmember Purstuck was there and Councilmember Brand and in addition to Colonel Roberts, who's the commander of the 61st Air Wing, speaking, the, the main presentation was Team Rubicon. I mean, I am not worthy. The work that they do, it was started in 2010 as a one person with three friends who went over to respond to the Haiti earthquake and the devastation and now is worldwide. And they've sort of brought it back in to try to, to emphasize the United States and all the hurricanes and the other disasters that they respond to, but they do phenomenal work. They were here in El Segundo once as their headquarters, we want to bring them back. What a group, I mean, was it just, just remarkable. So that is all I have, so back to public communications.
Counsel, how are you? Scott Nichol, resident, 1124 East Dequesha. Ms. Weaver, if I could hand you this and you could pass it off. What you're about to see, over the past few months, I was approached, I live on 1100 Block at East Dequesha, I was approached by one of my neighbors to do something, is how it was brought to me. Candy Cane Lane, time of year is coming around. The 1100 Block is that first block off of the closed 1200 Block of Candy Cane Lane. Very impacted block when it comes to parking traffic, pedestrians not knowing that that street is not pedestrian-friendly, like the 1200 Block is pedestrian-friendly. Last year, the ambulance came to our block three times for people that got hit by cars. Numerous people had property damage, whether it was, you know, people trying to parallel park a spot that really was not the size of their car, so on and so forth. So there are impacts. Candy Cane Lane at the 1200 Block has always been a resident-run event. It is a glorified block party by permit. It's a Parks and Rec special event permit that gets pulled every year, so really it has nothing to do with all of you, city and police and fire. I put out the letter that you read there on the front, that was what was, my son and I went door-to-door and handed it out last week. He had a lot of fun. Didn't want me talking to people, but he had a lot of fun for a five-and-a-half-year-old. A lot of the neighbors were like, "Let's, we want our street blocked off as well." 1200 Block is like, "We are Candy Cane Lane, you are not Candy Cane Lane. We are totally fine with that. Not want-to-be Candy Cane Lane." But that said, I vocalized to the neighbors that wanted it just blocked off for resident traffic only, that if we block off our block and the problems that we're currently dealing with, we're just pushing it on to the next street, so it's really not a solution, it's just like a quick answer to make us happy. And so what I proposed to them, and I worked with Nick Petrowski on the Public Works Department on this, he's the one who drew the map for me, he's going to make some changes, but I don't think he was in today. I proposed this one-way traffic option. Does a couple things. It protects the 1200 Block from the potential of someone deciding to step on the gas pedal and just throwing people down, because I don't know if any of you attended Candy Cane Lane last year, not on opening night, but it was insane. Every night. It was a Wednesday night where people were still walking around at 11 o'clock at night. So not really here to ask you for anything other than, one, your input, your opinion, and it to be on your radar, or the fact that if somebody was to get seriously injured on the street, it is a city street. This is, it's not a city event, but it does impact the city, both positively and negatively, and there is definitely some liability out there. I did some research on those temporary K-Rail barricades. We don't own any, to my knowledge, when I've talked to some of the people that work here at the city, they say we don't own those. They're fairly inexpensive. I had to call around a bit today to find a company that actually had them in stock and could get them here fast enough. The cost of the seven that are needed for the proposed blockage on Californian Walnut Acacia and Center Street would be around $2,300 and change. There's like a $750 freight cost to get it here. So we're looking at a $3,000 buy. As Dr. Brand mentioned earlier, the city doesn't really do anything in a timely manner, so I don't see something happening in time to say, "Yeah, let's buy those, let's get them." But my thought is that myself and/or a few of us on the 1100 Block would gladly donate them to the city for use, but this is something that is not just a temporary Parks and Rec block party permit that would have to be pulled, because these would be temporary blockades put on the street. Briefly talking to the fire chief about it, took a look and said, "I don't think this is a big issue." I worked with Captain Turnbull, conversation on this, because he does live on the 1200 Block. He and I had a wonderful conversation. It was a bit of, "All right, Bob, let's talk as, you know, neighbors. We're El Segundo residents, let's talk like that." And then I said, "Okay, now put your city hat on. You're a captain, what is this, like, talk to me about that policing standpoint." And something should be done, nothing has been done, so I just wanted to put it on your radar. I know during public comment, you can't really say anything, so I look forward to our conversations post this public comment, but that's it.
Sally Martin, I am the chairperson of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, the former co-chair, so it's understood that, that that could be a mistake. Two and three Loma Vista is where I live and I also own Studio Antiques on Richmond Street with my husband. I just wanted to clarify, from our standpoint, Ava and I were talking a little bit. First of all, Councilmember Dugan, in regards to the number of members, that's not really the problem. There is a lot of work to be done and if we establish a subcommittee, we need three people to be on that subcommittee. And right now, we have at least three things we're working on. Eva is on every committee there is. So we have people who are limited in their availability and, you know, it's the same old story, 80, 20% of the people do 80% of the stuff and we can't have, we need to have an opportunity for other people to participate. So the numbers are important to us. The second thing it's important to know is that we actually were expecting three candidates to be interviewed today by the city council. I'm just letting you know that that was our expectation, including the two that were mentioned and a third one. So we don't have a problem in having the city council do the interviews. We want a commitment to expedite it so that we can build this committee up, because as Dr. Brand said, we started at seven and in December, we're four, and it's not been easy. We can't just have a special meeting every month. So if you can make it a priority, we will happily accept your recommendations and we would still like to make some comments, if that's at all possible, but that's kind of why we need the people and why we need to get the membership built up right away. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll close public comments and then any council comments?
Yeah, if the city doesn't have K-Rail, I'm pretty sure we could probably borrow some from the refinery for a day or two. We could probably work something out, so I encourage you to just shake that tree and see if they're willing to loan a couple out, then you can figure out how to get them transported over and back and forth, but I think the refinery has some, can get their hands on some pretty quick and easy.
Sounds like a month.
Pardon?
A month.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, make the, make the connection and that way, nobody has to buy anything, we can just use them and put them back, so...
So I know we can't make any decisions about this, but if this were to go forward with the request for the one-way street, would that require a petition from all the neighbors, like a block party does? That you have to have, what is it, 80% of the neighborhood agree to it?
Oh, I think we need to get our department heads together in Traffic Safety Committee and figure out whether, whether this is something that we can support and whether, how we would make it happen and what the process is.
Okay, so you'll work with Mr. Nichol, so...
And we can, we can bring it back to council on a future agenda.
Also, is, is it worth looking into maybe doing a shuttle from the east, from the west side, offering a shuttle to our residents?
Too many people.
Or, you know, for the Candy Cane Lane, for the opening at least, for the first couple days, that drops off at the east side, other west side, drops off, use our shuttle?
Wherever they park.
On the west side.
Where?
I mean, we could just have a pickup at one of, like, at Richmond Street School.
How about if we bring that item back with the...
Okay, I'm just putting it out there.
One-way traffic discussion.
Yeah. But just have some type of, offer shuttle service for the first couple nights or on the biggest nights.
Having lived in the 800 Block of California in the past, I would have appreciated a shuttle. Anyway, I know we're not supposed to comment on that, but I was going to, also, I know the Police Department has been doing a lot with thinking about where potential, things could go wrong from a terrorist attack, and they've been doing a lot with the fireworks and this is certainly a gathering with a lot of people, so my only comment would be, I don't know how much damage something like this could actually sustain if someone really had malicious intent versus a vehicle, for example, or something. So I would just like to see, I thank you, Scott, for bringing this forward and doing the research legwork with your neighbors. I would just like to see the, this be comprehensive and getting some other ideas there rather than just a plastic sand-filled thing, although I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments? Well, this evening, we're going to close with a very special memorial. Christopher William Kelly, age 94, of El Segundo, California, passed away on November 3, 2017. He was born in Dublin, Ireland. Christie, as he was fondly known by his family and friends, met and married the love of his life, Joan, in Dublin. They were happily married for 64 years. In 1957, leaving a good job at the Guinness Brewery, Christie and Joan, along with their two-year-old son Hugh, immigrated to the United States. In 1960, Christie settled his family in El Segundo and started a prosperous career at Transworld Airlines. Christie was an active member of the Los Angeles Irish community and sat on both the Irish Fair Board and the Rose of Tralee Board. In 1977, Christie helped Joan start the Kelly School of Traditional Irish Dance, which was one of the first Irish dance schools in Los Angeles and is still in operation under the stewardship of daughters Claire Kelly Maxwell and Carol Kelly Purstuck. Christie was very proud to have been a 57-year resident of El Segundo, where all four of his children, Hugh, Amelda, Claire, and Carol, were able to grow up and graduate from El Segundo High School and Loyola Marymount University. Christie is survived by his wife Joan, son Hugh, daughters Amelda, Claire, and Carol, and eight wonderful grandchildren, Chris, Brian, John, Michaela, Jessica, Emily, Isabel, and Samantha. His family was the joy and light of his life. Christie could always be found around town at one of his grandchildren's events, a local garage sale, or walking his beloved dog Bandit. He will be missed. Mr. Kelly's Rosary will be held on Tuesday, November 21, and the funeral mass will be held on Wednesday, November 22, at 10:00 a.m. at American Martyrs Church. All are welcome to attend and celebrate his life.